Okay. Welcome, everyone, to the Picken County Board of County Commissioners Work Session on Tuesday, February 23rd. I'm the Chair Kelly McNicholas Curry. Joining me in the rooms, our newest Commissioner Francie Jacober and Vice Chair Patty Clapper and Terry Anderson helping us on Zoom. And the Commissioners joining us from home are Greg Pocheman and Steve Childs. And our first order of business today is the Board of Social Services. So I will request a motion from the Board to convene a special session as the Social Services Board.
So moved.
Thank you, Patty. Greg, can I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. So we have a motion by Patty and a second by Francie. All in favor?
Aye.
Please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And so with that, I will welcome Nan Sundin, our Director of Human Services, to kick us off and introduce her team. Hi, Nan.
Great. Thank you. Hi, everybody. I'm Nan Sundin, Human Services Director. And we're gonna, you know, step back a little bit because this is Francie's first Board of Social Services meeting. So we want to walk you through as slowly as we can, Francie. We're gonna use acronyms and it might get overwhelming. And so please feel free to raise your hand or type in what are you talking about. So by law, the Board of Social Services, which is the Board of County Commissioners, is responsible for reviewing the social service, and that's the same as human services. We call it human services in Picken County, to review our expenditures and to review our payrolls. Payrolls are direct client benefits, so things like food assistance or Medicaid or those programs. So those are the only two requirements. We, because we're Home Rule Charter, we only come four times a year. There are some counties that go monthly and for some counties, they go every two weeks. But because we're Home Rule Charter and John oversees our budget and there's authority that you've given him, we do come to you quarterly to do the very thing, which is to give you a review of our expenditures, our client payrolls. And then we use the opportunity to give you updates about social services, human services, so that you all have some familiarity of what's going on, especially for those of you who go to CCI or state calls and you might hear some things. This is our fourth quarter 2020 presentation. So we're, we usually come in about a month and a half after the quarter ends. It takes us that long for the books to close. And so we will review those. And then we also have the great opportunity that Kelly Pazar is here for her last meeting with human services as our finance analyst to sort of train and allow Audrey Warner, our new finance analyst, to learn from Kelly today. So I want to thank Kelly for coming in today. And we also have present today Chad Federwitz from Senior Services, Lindsay May, she's the Deputy Director of Human Services, Matt McGaw, the Manager of Adult and Family Services, and Sam Lander Casper, who's the Manager of Economic Assistance. And a little bit later, we're excited to introduce you to TJ Bulke, our new Veterans Officer. So I'll just start and then we'll, we'll see. I'm do, I have, I'm gonna share my screen if I can do this correctly. Here it is. Would you like to, do you see the screen? Are you guys watching it? The PowerPoint?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. So our basic, what we call normal human services functions are...
Hey, Nan, can you put it, sorry to interrupt. Can you just put it in presentation mode so it can be full screen? Great. Thank you.
Better?
Yep, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Kelly. So our usual functions, not COVID, and we're not really gonna talk about COVID today because we all need a break and we want to talk to you about our annual operations. So Senior Services does meals, transportation and programs. Adult and Family Services provides child and adult protection, prevention and intervention services. Economic Assistance is responsible for all eligibility for assistance programs, financial and food and all of those. Veteran Services provides assistance with claims and resources. And then the final piece that we have that many counties don't and we're so fortunate is we have the Healthy Community Fund that allows us to provide $3 million to support the Social Safety Net. Okay, so I'm gonna turn it over to Kelly and Audrey to talk first about expenditures and then we'll be asking the Board of Social Services to make a motion to approve the expenditures and then we'll talk about the payrolls.
Hi. Thanks. One minute, please, after I bring up my presentation.
Do you need me to, oh, you, are you looking at the screen, Kelly? Do you need me to step out of presenting?
No, no, you're good.
Okay.
Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome, Francie. Nice to see you.
Thank you.
I am going to be presenting to the fourth quarter budget review and expenditure reporting, starting with the budget versus actual for the whole year and then moving on to our expenditures by quarter. So a reminder, and might be new to Francie, this update covers our fiscal year, the county's 2020 calendar year budget, which is our fiscal year. And the program allocations that we receive from the state follow the state fiscal year, which is July 1st through June 30th. So we're currently in the state fiscal year 2021, which will end in June. And a reminder that when the state closed out in June 2020, there was additional funding available. There was CARES funding given and all of our programs were fully covered at that time, even though we were over expended. And this will explain why, if you look in the right column, that our revenue percentages are high in most of our programs because we received additional funding today. I want to start with looking at the bottom of the chart, towards the bottom, total programs. You'll see that for the year we budgeted with, possibly with budget supplementals as well included in there, that we would end the year with a deficit of $935,000. But the actual came in at $437,000 deficit, which is a savings of almost a half a million dollars. So we did really well. And then I will, any questions so far? I will jump up to explain a few of the things under the programs. So the first program listed in the upper right, you see Admin and Economic Assistance. And there was a huge jump in SNAP and Medicaid programs with, oh, bad, sorry, Nan got to get it in there sometime, during the second and third quarter. And the fourth quarter, though, has returned a little closer to our pre-pandemic level. Overall, we had additional staff hired to, contemporary staff, we had some additional expenses there and our permanent staff overtime due to the COVID-19 response. Something that's not included in these numbers, just as a reminder, was all of the economic assistance payments that we made and provided to the community back in the spring and summer. None of that, none of that is included here in that line. Moving down to TANF, at the state fiscal year 20 year end, back in June, we did purchase additional allocation from other counties. And we did also receive additional grant funds. Economic Assistance payments that were made, all of the additional payments that were made because of the pandemic, TANF-related, TANF-eligible clients is included in those numbers. And the last one I wanted to call out was childcare. So if you look at childcare, we're underspent, we're at 80% at the end of the year. And that's because, again, due to the pandemic, a number of childcare facilities were closed down in the spring, summer, until they started opening up. So that's why that's low. And that's all I had to report out on the budget versus actuals. Any questions so far?
Greg?
Greg? Yeah, hi. Hey, hi, everybody. Hi, Kelly. Nice to see everyone. You all look very familiar to me. I think I know you all. Kelly or Nan, I'm just thinking, I don't know if Francie's up to speed on the TANF situation, which I've always found kind of complicated, where we can actually buy funds from other counties. And I don't know if this is the right time to explain that, but I can always hear it again and maybe Francie would as well.
Sure. I, I'm happy to. The rule allow, we get allocations from the state and the allocation is for TANF, is based on poverty, number of children and utilization, prior year utilization. And so we get an allocation from the state, as every county does. We, we can overspend our TANF allocation and then we are able to technically buy dollars from counties that have underspent. And I believe that TANF is at 14 cents on the dollar generally, and we can do the same with childcare. We can buy someone else's unspent childcare allocation at more like 11 or 12 cents. It depends on the moment, per dollar. So it's been a really economical way for us to overspend, serve more people and buy at a very low cost, a 10% on the dollar generally, more dollars. We're not able to do that with other allocations. We can't do that with admin, though. I keep asking, can we buy people's unspent admin? And we can't do that with child welfare, but in closeout, we're also able to apply for, we can apply for unspent funds, but it's a different process and it doesn't cost us anything if we do get, receive some of them.
So like with childcare, which is under, we would then, we have the opportunity to sell that to another county, but then also, can we save it and spend it the next year?
No, there's no saving it.
Okay.
With TANF, we can put some of our money into a TANF fund balance. It's the only program that, that we can do that consciously. And, but it's a small percentage for child welfare and a small percentage for childcare.
And then would the, I mean, 21% underspent is pretty significant. Will that affect what will be allocated in the next year?
Sometimes it does. It takes two or three years of underspending to see an adjustment in our allocation. We, we have seen that in adult protection. So we got a reduction in adult protection because our caseload has been smaller, but it was smaller for a number of years in a row.
Steve? Thanks, Nan. Oh, thank you. Steve, I think you have some questions?
Yes, Nan, there have always been dollars, we've always been able to buy dollars from other counties. This year above all, might be a year when all the counties spend all their money and there wouldn't be any dollars to buy from other counties. Has that ever happened? And what would happen if we are way overspent and we can't buy from other counties?
Yeah, that's a good question. So we also have a protected human services fund balance. So at the end of the calendar year, if we are underspent throughout our whole budget, that money is protected and it gets saved in a human services fund balance. It can't go back to the general fund. So we have a healthy fund balance and that is our cushion in the event that there's a dramatic change in our expenditures or in state allocation or something changes. I have not seen, I guess it has happened, we've had to use the fund balance, but mostly, but mostly we have not. We've been really good about budgeting and finding other funding to cover our over expenditures.
Thank you, Nan. I'll continue. So this budget versus actuals that I just reviewed with y'all is informational. I'll be moving to the part here where it will require an action to approve these numbers that I'm gonna present now. And it's the 2020 total expenditures by quarter. Yep, Nan, just checking that, Nan's presentation was on that. There's been a little bit of change, well, a lot, in TANF. And if you have questions about that, I hope that Sam Lander Casper would be able to explain why there's been a drop in the quarter for TANF. But the rest are pretty much on. I think you've had time to review this. You received the packet already. Are there any specific questions on our total expenditures? So this, this chart will be different than the one below it that you'll see Sam present because these numbers include all direct client benefits, which Sam's is gonna show, but it also includes administrative costs and overhead and could be net of recoveries that we've received. So it'll be a little different than Sam's, which will also be...
Okay, are there any questions on the expenditures? Okay, seeing none, can I request a motion to approve the 2020 fourth quarter expenditures, please? Steve?
I'll move. Second.
All right, Greg moved, Steve seconded. Steve, did you have another question? No? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we'll go, we'll go on. Thank you. So I would really just like applause for Kelly for finishing up with us, training Audrey, helping us really step up and clean up our fiscal game in human services. And now she goes to public health. They're so lucky to have her, but thank you, Kelly, for coming to the meeting today.
Thank you, Nan. It was a pleasure.
Okay. So payrolls. Sam?
All right. Hey, I'm Sam Lander Casper. I manage the Economic Assistance Department. And what we're looking at here are the quarterly payrolls for 2020 for all of our programs. These, like Kelly mentioned, these are the benefits that are paid directly to customers and in the case of childcare and LEAP, they're amounts that are paid directly to the providers. So just for a quick recap, the AIDS to the Nene Disabled Program is a cash benefit program that is for folks who are under the age of 60, over the age of 18, who have a disability determined by a doctor. And that program allows for a monthly cash benefit to be paid to them. The Childcare Assistance Program that we've mentioned pays, depending on eligibility for the program based on income, can pay a portion or almost all of a family's childcare costs for their children at daycare. The Old Age Pension Program is for folks who are over the age of 60, who are not making the minimum Social Security amount, and that is another cash program that can supplement their income. The Low Income Energy Assistance Program helps pay for heating costs, particularly around gas, and those payments are made directly to the providers of those services. Colorado Works, which is the TANF or Temporary Assistance for Nene Family Program, is a cash benefit that also comes with some case management, depending on qualifications for families with children under the age of 18 in the home. And then the SNAP, Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, also known as Food Assistance, is a monthly benefit that's put on in what's called an EBT card, an Electronic Benefits Transfer Card, that allows people to purchase food items with that monthly benefit if they're eligible for the program. So just wanted to run through that so we had a understanding of what each of these programs are. And as we're looking at the quarterly payments this year or payrolls this year, there's just a few trends that we wanted to call out, just to kind of explain what was going on there. If you look at the Childcare Assistance Program, you'll see that the expenditures have fluctuated a lot throughout 2020. That had a lot to do with certain providers either being closed down due to the shutdown earlier in the year or throughout the year as a result of isolate quarantines and isolations and exposures to COVID. So we've seen a lot more fluctuation this year than we typically do and, as we mentioned, we are a little underspent at the end of the year. We're hoping to see that turn around moving forward.
Sam, if I could just add to Kelly's question, one of the reasons why we're underspent in childcare is we got a big increase this year in our allocation because our utilization has been up. So not so worried about underspending, just because, you know, it's like there's a lag time in the allocation adjusting to what we've been spending. So we're actually in a good position. The allocation exactly followed our understanding of the model and why we keep overspending because eventually the allocation catches up.
So I have a question about that.
Right.
Were there fewer clients in the CCAP childcare program this year or is this related to the number of days for closures?
That, that's it. It was related to the number of days. We didn't see either an increase or a drop off in, in the number of children enrolled in the program. We had a little bit of churn within the caseload, depending on industries that were closing down and, and open, but for the most part, our caseload stayed fairly, fairly level throughout the entire year.
Thanks, Nan.
And a reminder that we chose by policy to pay for those child spots even though the providers were closed through the summer, just to make sure that children did not lose their spot.
Right. And that's what you'll see reflected in quarter two. Sorry, where did that go?
All right, Sam.
Okay. In quarter two, when we were actually paying all authorized days, that was in March, early on, when there was the complete shutdown, and we adjusted the policy to pay all authorized days of care to really help support our childcare providers in the area. And then once things opened back up, you see the big dip in quarter three, where we had a lot of trepidation. Some folks weren't really interested in spending their children back to the childcare providers. We also had some shutdowns and I think that's where you see that dip. And then we see it level out a little bit in quarter four, which is a little closer to what our typical spending is for the program. We also, you'll see that LEAP, the Low Income Energy Assistance Program, was very heavily utilized in quarter two, even throughout the year. We're, we're a lot higher than usual because they extended the window for folks to apply for that program. Typically, it's from November through April and they extended it all the way through September. So people were able to enroll in that program throughout the year and we just saw that as people were going on and off of employment, they were able to get, access those benefits. So we were really happy to see that money going out to help offset those utility costs, especially the heating costs in the winter and early spring. We also see that the Colorado Works Program, the spending there peaked in quarter two and then by quarter four, you see a pretty significant drop off to $316. The program has two aspects of how folks receive assistance. One is called Basic Cash Assistance and that is for very low income families and it provides them with a monthly amount that they receive in cash. The other program, which we were using, using more heavily early on in the year, is called the Diversion Program. And the eligibility requirements for that are much different. That maximum household income is $75,000. So a lot more people are eligible for that and that program is geared towards responding to emergency and disaster situations to help stabilize those families. So we saw a higher uptake in that area of the program early on in the pandemic and then as a lot of our community partners took on some of those emergency assistance benefits, then that dropped off. And then finally, we see that the SNAP, the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program issuance continues to be about 50% higher than usual. You'll see we really peaked in quarter two and quarter three and that represents the six months of the initial eligibility period. So in March, when folks were laid off, a lot of people were able to apply for SNAP. We saw a 600% increase in our applications and a more than 100% increase in our caseload, resulting in a lot more benefits going out, which we can see the comparison from year to year in the next slide. Let's see, yep, there we go. So now we, this is just showing our year to date. We just wanted to put that in for comparison, especially with 2020 being so different. The main thing that we're seeing a difference in, like I mentioned, is the LEAP program as well as the Colorado Works and then the Food Assistance. So as you can see, our issuance had dipped in 2019, but with 2020, we've gone, you know, 20, 30% higher than our usual issuance. Are there any questions around any of that information?
I am not seeing any, Sam.
So we could use a motion to approve the fourth quarter payrolls.
So moved.
Patty, thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Steve. And any discussion or questions from the board? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sam.
Great. Yeah, thank you. So usually our format is we like to talk about policy changes and program changes and then any updates. In our fourth In our fourth quarter report, we really like to use the time to, to give you some data about caseloads. Uh, so we're just gonna go department by department and have, uh, people present data and then also if there are any policy or program updates that you, you would have found in your, um, memo. So Matt, you wanna start?
Sure. Hello, my name is Matt McGon. I manage our Adult and Family Services. What we have here in our, uh, with these two graphs is just some workload data. Um, the, the one on top represents our, our child welfare workload. And so, um, if you look at the two, we, we compared the two years because there was, um, quite a drastic difference in, in child welfare across the state. I believe it was about a 27% reduction in the amount of referrals, uh, since the onset of COVID. And, and we know that that wasn't because there, um, was a decrease in maltreatment. It was more because the children weren't in school and they weren't being seen. And so, um, it was, it was quite a drastic differ- difference in the workload. So you can see the difference where we had 215 reports in 2019 compared to 69 in 2020. So quite a big de- decrease there. Um, I will say that our staff have been extremely busy with more ongoing cases. Picken County this year, um, I think we peaked with 10 children in care. And so that, that's quite a bit for, for a small county and, and something that, um, yeah, that we, uh, we haven't seen a lot of in recent years. With our, um, any questions about the child welfare workload?
Steve?
Yeah, Matt, um, it seems like there could potentially be even more cases of child abuse happening that just are not being seen because they're in the homes. Do, do you have any way of tracking that sort of a phenomenon?
Not right now that we are aware of. Obviously, with the big dip and, and how that, the way that the dynamics over the past year has changed this data, uh, we definitely know that there are probably a lot of families in need of services, our children that may be at risk for abuse and neglect that, that aren't being, um, seen by mandated reporters on a daily basis. Uh, so we hope with, uh, with going back to some regular schedules, we'll, we'll see the, the referrals come back to us because we really wanna reach out to families and try to offer the services we have available to help them, especially during stressful times like this.
Ma'am, I have a-
Thank you.
Sorry, Steve, are you done? Yeah, okay. Now, I have just sort of a follow-up question. Does this data get further broken down by like age? So couldn't, can you, can you compare like grades of children that have been in school versus children who've either been in and out of school or, um, have mostly been out of school because of how their, their schedules have reacted to COVID to, to get a sense of, of that?
Yeah, we do have that ability to, to drill that down. It isn't off the top of my head, um, information I, I have available.
Sure. No, that's okay. I think it could be like a looking back at COVID, what did we learn? Um, and then I'm wondering would, if there's, are you seeing more referrals coming through like public safety, you know, through police departments or sheriff or anything?
Yeah, I think there's been a noticeable increase there. Um, you know, I think with domestic violence cases and things like that, um, a little more with family stress and things like that happening. So, um, yeah, we do see a little bit more of that.
Okay, thank you. Greg?
Yeah, thanks. Um, I'm, I was just wondering, um, do you have any information on how long a child stays in a system like this? Is it, it must be ongoing situations. Um, I know there are new referrals, but I'm just wondering if, if there'll be any carryover from year to year and we can glean any information from that on the, you know, the number of actual cases that may be out there?
Yeah, it's, um, sometimes hard to break down the data for Picken County just because of the smaller numbers. I will say that our, there is different levels of involvement in child welfare. So a referral is, is, is just a report of maltreatment, um, child abuse or neglect, and an assessment is where we actually accept the referral to, to look at and do a safety assessment with the family. And so the ones that we screen out, we, we will offer them prevention services that are completely optional for the family to participate in. Um, when we screen them in, we're required by law at that point to, um, complete an assessment with the family. And that is, uh, an involvement that would only last up to 60 days. If we do anything past that, it's really what we call an ongoing case. So we, we do that sometimes with a court-involved case or sometimes, or most of the time we do voluntary cases with families and do case management to set up, uh, treatment plans and services to help them, uh, with whatever issues that they wanna work on. That are related to child safety issues. And as far as the timeframe, I mean, obviously with children in care and length of cases, those are things that we would wanna look at and really have as short amount of, as involvement as possible, uh, with families so that, uh, the government is involved with their life and they don't have child welfare there. The idea is to support them so that there's not us involved.
Okay, I'm not seeing any other questions.
Okay, thank you. Uh, to move to the adult protection, obviously, Nan mentioned that we've had lower numbers in, in recent years that's impacted our allocation. Um, I would say that, um, we have about a 50, a designated caseworker at 50% for our adult protection caseload. Uh, with that, we do have a, a case management program that we offer adults 60 and over if they need some case management and support that don't meet adult protection criteria. And so here, our, our workload over the last two years has been pretty steady, not a huge impact from, from COVID.
How do you get those? I think Francie has a question for you. Sorry.
How do those come to you usually?
Um, these will come from a variety of, of sources. There are new laws now, I think since 2018, where there's mandated reporters for adult protection. So that would include law enforcement, um, anyone, uh, caretakers that work in facilities or go into homes, um, a lot of medical providers, uh, that those are the main sources will get reports for adult protection. A lot of family members will make report, reports as well. And with these, it's a, a little different, you know, and trying to really engage our adults in working with a caseworker or maybe accepting some services or getting connected to resources. Um, it's really trying to build trust with, with them and, and let them know that, you know, we're there to try to help them. Any other questions on that?
Not seeing any.
Okay, thank you. Briefly, just a few things with our policies and, and some updates. Uh, the first bullet point there, Safe Care, um, really what that is, is, is we, as a department, will be working with local hospitals to develop, uh, protocols and, and procedures around how we would respond to infants that are born substance, uh, exposed. And so really the idea is there to have, is to strengthen a coordinated plan, uh, to help, uh, families work through those issues and to make sure that, uh, newborns are safe. We know that, um, those can be the highest rates of infant fatalities, um, and child fatalities in homes is where there's, there's substance use in young children. So there's an emphasis on developing a policy and, and we haven't, um, completed this yet. It's, it's something that we're working with, uh, our local hospitals to set up and, and get, and get a policy in place. This isn't, um, in rule quite yet at the state. It's mainly just guidance they're giving counties right now. Any questions on that?
I have a question. Do we know, do we have a lot of home births in Picken County that would, you know, operate outside of these policies?
That's a good question. Um, in the guidance, they're talking about how we can reach out, in the state guidance that they're giving counties right now, about how we can reach out to try to find other, other ways to reach where, you know, um, other places where children are being birthed.
Or I wonder, is there an opportunity to bring in, you know, the health clinics or the obstetricians, um, who might see patients prior? Would just be a suggestion.
Or midwives.
Midwives, yep.
It is, it is part of the guidance at this point to reach out to those providers. Um, the, I think they wanted to prioritize with hospitals and then move to the other, other agencies involved there.
Sure. Thank you.
The second bullet point, uh, with family first, um, if you remember legislation that was passed in 2018, um, that has a big shift in how, uh, child welfare agencies are funded. And so, um, Colorado was in the process of submitting an application to the federal government to opt in to family first so that we could start drawing down this federal money that's available. And really, the idea is to incentivize evidence-based and community-based services that would help keep families intact. And so really, the idea is to try to provide services that we know work, that will help families stay together and reduce children having to leave the home and go into care. And so at this point, Colorado has pulled back their application. Uh, we have until October of 2021 to submit this. And, uh, the reasoning at this point for the delay is, um, a strategy to try to position ourselves to make sure that we can draw down as much federal money as possible. Um, so locally, right now, we're, I'm working in a, a state committee, um, to explore whether or not, um, some of these evidence-based practices could be implemented across all counties. So right now, we're looking at motivational interviewing as a potential intervention to help families, um, and that we would be able to draw down this federal money to pay for those services. And so at this point, it's still kind of a work in progress, and I will have another update on this, uh, at our next meeting. Is there any questions on that right now?
Not seeing any.
All right. The APS audit is basically just an update that we're gonna be working closely with the state, um, on some of the recommendations that they were given by the federal government. Uh, we have a yearly audit with our state partners, and they will be here in May, and , uh, will do some case reviews with us and then work with us to implement any changes or anything to help improve our practices at this point. It's outlined a little in more detail in your packet. Um, not sure if there's any questions on that right now?
I don't see any.
Thank you. Last bullet is foster care. Just wanted to give an update that, uh, we do now have three homes that we have certified, uh, to be foster homes, and I'm in the process of getting them, uh, fully licensed and operational, um, a process that I'm learning. So, um, hopefully in the next month, we'll have them available. Uh, we do have them certified, so that was a big step in the process. Any questions about that?
Greg?
Just wanted to say, well done.
Thank you. Um, it's been a process. It's definitely a challenge in smaller counties to try to recruit and have the infrastructure to, to maintain homes. So it's something that our team will be working on.
Steve?
Great, thank you, Matt.
I think Steve has a question.
Oh, is there another question?
Go ahead.
Matt, um, right now with no foster homes here, um, if we have the need for it, have we been sending children to Eagle County or, or, uh, Garfield County?
Yeah, we've been really successful at connecting children with, with Ken and family. So there's been a lot of local placements that way. But what we would do is, is, yeah, call Garfield County. They are, have been super helpful in the past. Um, and then also there's child placement agencies that we can contact. That typically means Grand Junction, though. And so that's tough, and we try to keep them as close to home as possible. Kelly?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just thinking a little bit of the history on, on what it's taken to get the foster home, uh, established, because I think almost as long as I've been on the board, I know how hard, uh, the work has been to, to establish and, and make this happen. And if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, it's been a few years in trying to get to this point where we actually have three foster homes now, which is more than I thought we had. I just wanted to, for maybe for Francie's sake or for, for our own, but I think it's a, it's a nice milestone to know we actually have this now.
Thank you for acknowledging that. I'll just say, you know, Garfield County has, um, dedicated foster care workers. Well, I think two full-time staff that are trying to do this. And, and so for us, it's really something that's kind of been a side project. We're trying to get support from the state on this, and I've had to contract out a, a bit for some of these services to get the homes, uh, certified. Uh, but yeah, it's been a work in progress, and we hope to, to recruit more and, and maintain them as long as we can.
Any other questions before we move to senior services?
Francie, I'm just wondering how many kids from Picken do have to be removed from their homes and put in foster care annually?
I will say that, um, our team does everything possible to work with families and identify any safety concerns or risks and help them be successful with that. It's very rare that we look to place children. This past year, we did have a spike. And, um, I mentioned that there were 10 kids in care this past year. Where on average in the past, it's usually about one to three, uh, per year. So, um, it's not very often. Some years, we can, we can go without any placements. Um, a lot of them also are when the youth are a little older and maybe out of the control of their parents where there's a safety concern. And we've, we've kind of been asked to help provide some services in those cases, and those have resulted in some placements as well. Uh, but to answer your question, um, it's gonna be a handful a year or less, and we really try to, uh, only do that when it's absolutely needed for childhood.
Yeah, that's awesome. Do you have the, uh, statistic of how many of those kids come back to their families?
Yes, we do. You know, the reunification percentage for us has typically been, um, 100% each year. We're usually doing that. But in this case, this year, there will be some, um, outcomes where there could be guardianships or adoptions. So the reunification rate, uh, this, this year may look different. Uh, we just still have some ongoing cases at this point.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other questions, Matt. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Uh, Chad in Senior Services?
Yeah, thanks, man. Hi, everyone, I'm Chad Thowitz. I'm the manager of Senior Services. So kind of unlike some of my colleagues, I, I focus a lot on our nutrition program. Uh, our nutrition program, which would be traditionally meals served at the senior center, and then home-delivered meals are funded from local dollars to help the community fund, and then state and federal dollars via the Older Americans Act or the Colorado Older Americans Act. Um, and so these two, these charts on this slide kind of just represent the total number of meals, uh, for the last three years. And then I like to look at historical data when I can. And then I like to look at historical data when I can, and then kind of an 18-year kind of view of the meal program. I think what significance, if you look at the top chart, is those three years of 18, 19, 20 are the, are three years where senior services provided meals four days a week. Previously to 18, senior services was providing meals three days a week. So we have a, a good amount, a few years of comparable data to look at how, what those meal numbers are and what the kind of baseline, if you will, is. I think it's also notable to look at this year or 2020 with a pretty drastic spike in meal participation compared to the previous two years and historically as well. I think it's pretty, pretty amazing that we served more meals this year in total than we probably ever have historically, which is, I think, one kind of, I think, pointing toward a need within the community, however we want to classify that precisely, but also the, the work of the team of really pushing and promoting the meal programs, improving the quality of service of that program and the quality of the meals, frankly, as well. So really, really proud of the team that stepped up, particularly in this last year of the pandemic, and we never stopped providing meals. We never shut down. We adjusted how we did our program, and it's, I think it's just really, really great that we were able to do all those things.
Chad, why don't I show the next slide, and then you can talk about the program? Because it's still on meals.
Sure thing. So these two charts kind of break down these traditional funding streams of types of meals, from congregate meals, meals served at the senior center, and then traditional home-delivered meals. So the, these charts again show levels have continued to rise this year, particularly in the congregate meals. Home-delivered meals, it's a little more difficult as far as the trend or trend line due to the fluctuation of meeting the requirements in a, in a, in a pre-COVID sense of home-delivered meals. So traditionally speaking, home-delivered meals are, are qualified via being considered homebound via the state. So the, the challenge this year, right, was we, after COVID and the end of March, we closed the senior center to the public. And so all meals transitioned to home-delivered meals, though because of our state funding formula, we still had to count all those who wouldn't normally qualify for home-delivered meals as congregate meal recipients. So the numbers are, are merely split up that way due to the funding mechanism. But either way, the numbers continue to, to raise in comparison to previous years. And COVID or not, we do, we continually anticipate the numbers to continue to grow as the population grows and the demographics of the county adjust and change. The only other bullet that was on the previous slide was a little help. In 2019, the department contracted with a nonprofit called A Little Help that kind of provides volunteer-based show or service, transportation, food delivery, snow shoveling, the things of that nature. That 2019 was the first year of our contract and partnership, and they served over 63 older adults utilizing almost 80 volunteers. And the outcomes were very, were very positive. Almost everyone was very satisfied with the services and connection they had with A Little Help. And also, almost 50% of their, of the clients reported that they felt more connected to the community during the pandemic because of their connection with A Little Help, just solely A Little Help, not necessarily taking into consideration other entities they may be connected with. So we're going to be continuing our partnership into 2021 and trying to build upon that, the initial success. Any questions?
Yeah, Patty, and then Steve?
Yeah, Chad, thank you. Thank you for this information. Thank you for the clarification of why these numbers didn't reflect all the home-delivered meals, why they had to be split up. It was for the finding, the funding. So, but on the, on the home-delivered meals total for under April through June for 2019, that was a significant spike, up to 228. Did, was there anything that was going on there? Did we have bad weather and people couldn't get out, or I can't remember what was going on there?
No, no, it's really, it's really difficult to, to determine those changes and spikes. What was interesting, if you look, if you go farther back in time to about 2014, it's, which I don't have on these charts, but the home-delivered meals were even higher. You know, so our suspicion is older adults in general are healthier than they were even 10 years ago. So they don't meet criteria as being considered homebound, which, which more or less means under your own power, you can get out of your house with no assistance. You know, so, and, and some of the clarity around the state, even around how one qualifies or how is one determined to be homebound. Some of those, I would say, more strict rules are probably going to soften somewhat as lots of lessons learned within the aging network around having to adjust and be really flexible during COVID in that sense. So I wish I had a really concrete answer, but I don't think, I don't think I have one.
Yeah, so we, we have no, you know, nothing that jumps out at us as to why we have that spike between April and June of 2019. Yeah, that was a year of big snow, so maybe that did have a role in it somewhere. But it's interesting information just to follow. Thank you, Chad.
Sure.
Steve, go ahead.
Chad, my question has to do with A Little Help. I had volunteered previously, and now with the pandemic, I have avoided doing anything like that, both for my safety and for the safety of the people I would supposedly be helping if I went to help them. You don't want to be there to help them and give them a virus that they don't want.
George.
What is in the operating procedure for having people go to someone's house and, you know, giving them help during the pandemic?
Here's a great question, and I can kind of give a brief overview. So in the initial probably month, Little Help suspended all their kind of in-home or location-based services. They went to solely assisting with meal delivery and kind of reassurance wellness calls. After some time, when the CDC and the state of Colorado came out with some guidance around some of those types of services, then A Little Help adopted and wrote their own policies and procedures around contact, around safety of volunteers and the older adults, and still minimized, if not completely suspended those kind of in-home services, mainly staying focused on the meal delivery, the assurance calls, though they did eventually bring back assistance with transportation, similar to what senior services does with the senior van. But taking precautions as guidance from CDC around those types of issues became available. I don't know about helps.
Okay, so it's getting more back, I mean, hopefully by this summer, we can get back to more of what A Little Help used to do, a lot of going to do yard work or washing windows or things right at the person's home.
Exactly.
Okay, any other questions for Chad about these? Nope, not seeing any.
Okay.
Thank you, Chad. Nice to see you.
Thank you, Chad.
Hi again. So we have a couple of things we're going to talk about here, some policy changes. But first, I'd like to just go over some of the graphs we're showing around our caseload information. These first two graphs are showing both, well, the first graph is showing our applications for the Economic Assistance Program, both in 2020 and 2019. 2020 is the blue line. And as I mentioned earlier, we saw, depending on program, about a 600% increase in applications. That was particularly around the SNAP program. And then, as you can see, as the year moves on, we start to level out and kind of get a little bit more in line with what we normally see. The second chart is showing what we've, we've created a metric called churn. So this shows our monthly caseload churn. We developed this before the pandemic to really look at when, what time of year we were seeing people coming on and going off of these programs and looking for correlations to our seasonal economy and trying to look at ways in which we could kind of level that out. Just wanted to include that, particularly around the SNAP program. As you can see, in March, April, and May, there was a large number of folks going on to that program all of a sudden, obviously, when the shutdown occurred. And then you see the correlating drop about six months later in October when redeterminations happened. For the SNAP program, every six months, you have what's called a redetermination to see if you're still eligible for the program. And these folks, you'll see, we dropped about 25% in October, but, you know, you can see we had about a 75% jump in, in April. So that's where we see that we're still at about 50% higher than usual on the SNAP caseload.
Do you want to look at your, the caseload jumps and then go back to, okay?
Yeah, that'd be great. Thanks, Hannah. So this chart, we just wanted to include so that folks could kind of see what types of programs the applications were made up of by month. Just thought it was a good illustration of, particularly in April, how high the SNAP caseloads were. And just really speaks towards what kind of impact food insecurity has, especially when we see things like these pandemics where folks are getting, you know, out of work. And, you know, there was a lot of assistance going around, particularly around providing rent relief. So I think we see a lot of the need for, for food, assistance with food being shown there in April. So speaking of that, we can go back.
Sorry, could you just define the bars? I'm, I'm not sure I'm associating the initials with the right program.
Yeah, like AFCW, yeah.
Yep, absolutely. Sorry for that. So adult financial, that means either the old age pension or aid for the needy disabled program. CW is the Colorado Works Program. Expedited food assistance, so EXPFA, that is when folks apply for the SNAP program or food assistance program. They, if they have less income than their monthly expenses, that means that they're eligible for expedited food assistance, meaning we can get a benefit issued on their case in under seven days. So with a typical SNAP application, we have up to 30 days to process it, even though it doesn't usually take us that long. But the expedite program is really to help those folks whose expenses are lower, or their income is lower than their expenses. Fortunately for us, we typically are able to treat every case as if it's expedited. So we're usually screening those cases out within that seven-day window. And then FA is the Food Assistance or SNAP program, and MA is for medical assistance or the various Medicaid programs that we have.
Thank you.
No problem. Are there any other questions around any of that data that's showing there?
Uh, Greg?
Yeah, Sam, I was just thinking about the various other food assistance programs that we have that I'm sure that you are so tied in with. Is there a way we can, we can get, get an idea of how, how comprehensive and how large those programs are and how they, do they affect the way SNAP works? For instance, like if you get into one, can you get into both? Is one of them up, you know, supplementing the other and maybe changing the, the graphs that we would see from, from changing these graphs? I just know you've got the other food assistance programs, and I'm wondering how they tie in, and how can we understand those?
Yeah, I think this is a great opportunity to kind of link to. As you'll see, we have both the policy changes around the SNAP program listed here, as well as kind of the food security efforts that we're looking at. So I think the best way to set the stage for this conversation is the SNAP program is a federal program that has eligibility guidelines that are universal across all 50 states, for the most part. Alaska and Hawaii have slightly higher income limits. And what we find in particularly Colorado and Picken County is that the federal poverty levels are incredibly low for our cost of living here. So they're far below what we like to look at as the self-sufficiency standard. So the SNAP program is a great supplement for folks whose income is, is quite low and they're not meeting their needs. And where we step in with our additional programs and, and food security efforts is to really supplement those folks who don't qualify for the SNAP program but are still below that self-sufficiency standard to where they would have sufficient income to meet their household needs. So one thing that the federal government did early on in the pandemic to help make the SNAP program a bit more effective is they changed the policy to allow that anyone who qualified for the SNAP program, regardless of where their income fell, because in, in normal times, you would see if someone's income was higher but still below the income limit, they would have a smaller monthly benefit amount. What the Food Nutrition Services did at the federal level is they authorized additional aid to make sure that anyone who qualified received the maximum SNAP benefit regardless of their income. So if you met the minimum or the maximum income requirement to still qualify, you would still get a full SNAP benefit, which for, say, a single adult is, I believe, $204 a month. So the difference is, could easily be between $50 a month and $204 a month. So it's pretty significant. What they also did through the end of June is they authorized an additional 15% on top of that maximum monthly allotment. So they're really trying to augment this program to make it more robust, at least through the end of June. We'll see what happens after that. Additionally, they gave us an option early on, which we did take, to waive the interviews. The SNAP program typically requires an interview in order to determine eligibility, and based on the caseload that we had and the applications coming in, we did waive those interviews in March and April. However, when the six-month time period on that elapsed, we did say we were offered to re-renew that waiver, and we opted not to because we were seeing that a lot of folks weren't familiar with this program. They had found themselves applying for this assistance for the first time, and without that human touch, they weren't really getting a lot of information. They might have been misunderstanding how the program works. So we saw that creating issues in their cases. So we reinstituted doing interviews. We found that we're still able to keep up with the caseload and the applications, and we feel like this provides a higher level of service for our customers so that they're able to have that one-on-one interaction and touch base and, and ask questions about the, the program when they're first getting on to it, which we find, you know, avoids a lot of confusion later on. And as we look at food and, food security in the area, we have a lot of things going on right now. The ESF6, so Emergency Support Function 6 team organized a food distribution team that works with a lot of our community partners. You know, we have local government, we have nonprofit organizations, schools, all working together to address food insecurity, which has resulted in two bi-weekly mobile food distributions in Picken County. One is on Tuesday in Elgabelle, and one is on Wednesdays in Aspen at the golf course. Those are run by Aspen Family Connections in Aspen and Aspen Skiing Company in Elgabelle. We have also worked with lift-ups to get the Aspen Lift-Up Pantry open five days per week, which also includes a weekend that's open to anybody. open five days per week, which also includes a weekend that's open to anybody. We had a increase in the Community CSA, so Community Shared Agriculture Program, providing local produce to older adults and WIC families. We were able to get 35 shares purchased this year, and that went out weekly from May through the end of October. We were also able to purchase a refrigerated heated van with grant funds from the state that's being used by a local organization to rescue food from restaurants, grocery stores. That's recently gotten up and running but has already rescued 3,500 pounds of food. And then we were also able to bring in $100,000 in grant funding to purchase food from local producers that's being distributed at these mobile distributions. Currently, the last month, we've been purchasing around 1,000 pounds of locally produced meat that's getting distributed both in Elgabel and Aspen, as well as in LiftUp. And then moving forward, the group is focusing on establishing regular food pantries in some of our outlying areas, like Redstone and Thomasville, locating additional funds to continue purchasing these locally-produced goods to go into our pantries and distributions. We're working with a number of educational institutions to start working on research projects to develop a better understanding of the exact levels of food insecurity in Picking County and develop real local-level data. We're also looking at a strategic planning process for this food distribution group to develop goals over the next three to five years to really try to eradicate food insecurity. And we are working on a community free fridge program that basically is refrigerators placed in areas throughout the community that are stocked with food items from the store that are free to whomever needs them. So it's a pretty complex system that we're working on. We're taking our lead from a lot of other organizations and trying to really get a robust food system here in Picking County that really meets the needs of everybody, regardless of whether we're in a pandemic or not, because due to our high cost of living, food security is, is definitely one of, you know, the major things impacting our community. I know that was a lot. Are there any questions around any of that?
It's great, Sam. Yeah, Francie.
I'm wondering, for the meals that you have delivered to people's houses, where are those meals prepared?
Um, currently, we're not having meals, meals delivered to anyone's houses. The Senior Center does provide meal delivery. The food distribution system, we have a process in place for emergency meals to be delivered if someone were to be quarantined. That pretty much revolves around ordering from local restaurants to have it delivered. I think, I don't, I'm, I'm not sure about meal delivery. I don't know if I'm, where I mentioned that. Sorry if I forgot something.
You didn't, but when Chad was talking, he talked about meals.
Those are prepared at the Senior Center.
They're prepared all at the Senior Center?
My understanding.
Yeah. Yep, correct.
Yes, those are all, all senior meals. And those, yes, the Senior Center works on getting those delivered out to our community.
And so that you have volunteers or people who work for the county preparing the meals with food that is from the food bank, or?
Chad has an answer.
I can answer that. So it's a great question. So Senior Services does prepare and deliver everything around those meals. So we have a, a full-time chef and a part-time assistant. They are county employees. It is a requirement of our federal and state funding that they be prepared in such a manner, following not only food safety and food license procedures, but then on top of that, kind of Older Americans Act regulations and policies as well. So yes, but all those meals are prepared at the Senior Center, all with food or, or resources, following the state's guidelines of how we purchase that food, where we purchase that food, et cetera.
Okay, thank you.
I'll have to get you a visit to the Senior Center, Francie, so you can see it in action. It's magnificent.
Yeah, that's cool. I'm just wondering where people who have food to contribute can contribute it, you know, like, so you have to have a very specified provider for what's going on at the Senior Center?
Yeah, we are not allowed to accept any donated food. But, but that type of food can be donated to the local food banks, you know, and through some of the programs that Sam was talking about. Unfortunately, we just can't use it at the Senior Center.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Steve, you have a question?
Well, more a comment. Francie, when we are able, I will take you to the Senior Center for lunch. That's the best gift in town there. The meals are awesome.
That'd be fun.
Okay. Sam, I have two questions for you. One is pretty granular, and then one is bigger picture. On your slide related to medical assistance applications, it looks like there was a spike this last summer. And I'm wondering if you guys have any explanation for that?
Let's see, which, which month are we looking at in particular?
Can we go to the next slide? I'm looking at July and August where we see the orange spike there in medical.
Medicaid.
Physicians, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if I could attribute that to anything in particular. We do typically, you know, a lot of it's just related to employment. And, you know, our unemployment rates this year have been jumping all over the place. I think if we probably overlaid those with this graph, we would probably see a corresponding, you know, relationship there.
And then that leads me to my other question, related to the other graph that you have. How granular of data could you get? Like, could you look at, you know, ages of applicants, composition of family size, employment sector, those kind of things?
You know, we don't track it quite down to that level. Most of this information comes out of the state system, and we are able to create and pull reports out of there. So if, if need be, we could probably break it down to that level if that were to inform a conversation that we needed to have.
Okay. I was just thinking, in terms of the board's goal related to a conversation around equity and social safety nets, you know, if that type of information helps us identify, you know, who needed to access this and at what times of year and what the family compositions looked like and things like that. So maybe for a future discussion if, if, when the board's conversation kind of gels better. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. I know with our food assistance, the reports that I do pull to look at that, we do have household size. We can also pull the number of children in the home. So we can kind of break it down that way for the SNAP program at least.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for Sam on these items? Okay, I'm not seeing any. We have about 15 minutes left, Nan.
Yeah, I think Sam would like to introduce TJ, and then we'll move on to our final slide.
Yep, that would be great. So I'd just like, TJ's on. He's gonna just speak a little bit about his background and the work he's been doing. I'd just like to say that we're really happy to have him on board. And he's been doing a great job getting up and running and interacting with our veterans and meeting new veteran populations we hadn't really engaged with in the past. So we're happy to have him on board. TJ, you want to say hi?
Absolutely. Thanks, Sam. Yeah, so my name's TJ. I was stationed on Fort Hood between 2015, 2018, deployed to Korea. I'm still currently serving the National Guard, so that's a really cool aspect to bring to the table. I think I started working in the very beginning of September. Sam and I have been working very closely together on creating a more cohesive environment for veterans to step up and work together to get, you know, less work on the VA and more inclusive within the, within the county itself. We're also working on bringing in the Western Soul Veterans Coalition more and bringing in a lot of the, like, Hutsford Vets, Challenge Aspen, and bringing them all in together. So we have a, a really great group of, of younger veterans. We consider them Gulf War-era veterans from, I believe it's 1991 till present, to bring them kind of out of the woodwork. But then also, you know, still, still handle what we need to with the previous from 1991 veterans. So it's just a total change from what we've been trying to do. I think many of you are familiar with coffee and donuts. We're trying to, trying to make that more, more inclusive and a little bit more, I guess, I think coffee and donuts is a little, not enough. So we're working on doing dinners, lunches, stuff like that, bringing everybody together. And I really look forward to having everybody show up in the meeting. So that'd be great.
Welcome.
Thanks, TJ. Nice to meet you. Steve, and then I think Greg had a hand up?
Hi, TJ. Good to see you again. I'm curious about your service in the Texas National Guard. Do, do you have to go to Texas every summer for a few weeks? Could you tell us about that?
Yeah, absolutely. I actually go back and forth to Texas every month. So I spend one weekend a month in Texas, except for this last month because of the freezing cold temperatures and everything was shut down. But yes, I travel back and forth every month. And then once a year, I travel actually to, most of the time, Eastern Europe to do a large NATO force training for a couple of weeks. So it's, it's a little bit of a juggle.
That's exciting. You get to travel. Some of us don't get to do that.
Yeah, I, I don't know. It's in between free vacation and forced vacation. So whichever one sounds better.
Greg, did you have your hand up?
Actually, I didn't. Thank you. TJ, great, great to see you. Welcome. Really great to have you here. I'm gratified to hear you're already connected with Hutsford Vets and you're, you're, you know, getting involved with the veterans in the, in the community. And I'm looking forward to hearing more.
Thanks, absolutely. As am I.
Thank you, TJ, for being here. It's, we're excited to have you on the team. So I'll keep going because we're almost done.
And Nan, I realize, I'm, I wonder if I had cut Sam off, because he had a couple other policy things on his slide. So I just wanted to make sure we covered.
They're, they're in the memo, Sam. Is there anything that you feel like you have to cover? Or any questions from?
No, real quick, I would just plug the Medicaid Open Enrollment Expansion, because that's relevant to any, you know, members of the public who are watching. Open Enrollment typically ends at the end of December. This is when you can enroll for Medicaid coverage as well as plans that are subsidized by tax credits through the federal government. They've reopened that from February 15th through May 15th. So anybody who's needing help getting insurance who might have lost it due to unemployment, this is a great time. They would want to start by applying for Medicaid with our office.
If I could also say, not necessarily people who are unemployed, but people who have lost jobs or who can't afford their employer-based insurance. For some people, that's become just unbearable with all the other costs that they have. And so this is a good time to enroll in the exchange, see if you're eligible for tax credits, and get insured. And don't let insurance be the thing that you let go of, that you, that you don't pick up. So important, important for everyone.
Thank you, Nan.
Okay, Lindsay.
Hi. Yeah, there's, I say, we talked a lot about the Healthy Community Fund a couple weeks ago, so I'm not going to dive too deep just to tell you that we're, we're executing contracts right now to get payments out to all of the recipients of the Healthy Community Fund. One somewhat new development after the city council meeting last night is that they were, they did, you know, city council, or City of Aspen hired consultants to work with them on their grant program. And it sounds like they're moving in a very similar direction as we are in terms of aligning outcomes, setting priorities based on community needs. So it's exciting. They have decided, you know, we've always worked in tandem with them on their Health and Human Services. And we just learned today that, or last night, that they will be separating that process from ours. And that will give us some opportunity to talk about how to further partner with them in, in the, in both of our changing worlds of grants right now. So it's, it's exciting. It's kind of a new, uncharted territory for us, but it's exciting. So we're looking forward to that. The other piece is the Housing Stability Coalition. So just a quick update on that. We have hired Nicole Martinez. We're contracting with her, and she works for, from the Community of Hope in Las Cruces, New Mexico. And she's, we're working with her to do some consulting work in our case consultation meetings, working with individuals who are living in homelessness right now. And she's also providing some webinars to the community and to anybody that wants. And we're going to get some flyers out today, probably. And it's really around the Housing First approach. And if you haven't heard of the Housing First approach, it is, it, it's something that offers permanent affordable housing as quickly as possible for individuals and families who experience homelessness. And then it provides additional supportive services and connections to community-based supports to keep them in their housing. So it's really, the, the model is that we don't, you don't necessarily deal with like behaviors or substance use or things like that upfront. You deal with housing. So thinking kind of along Maslow's hierarchy of needs and, and getting shelter, you know, food and shelter in, into a person's life. And then you start looking at like mental illness or substance use and stuff. It's really intention is to build rapport upfront by offering housing and then working through some of the other things. So we're really lucky to have her. There's a webinar on Friday. We'll make sure you all get a flyer for that. And it's free for the whole community.
We could, two things. One is, we have had B O T C representation at our Housing Stability Coalition meetings, but with COVID, not in the past year. And just so you all know, people are asking, are the commissioners interested? Will they be participating? We have two city council people who do participate. So I know it's on your list, and it's hard when there's so many demands, but if you all could keep that in mind, moving forward. And then I just want to say with, with the city taking on their own grants, John, John knows, we've been trying to encourage them to do this for probably five or, for however long John has been here, 10 years. We have, as a courtesy, managed their Human Services grants forever, really, since I started, 30 years. And we wanted to encourage the city to think about what was important to them and make their own decisions about contributions to Human Services. So, so we see this as a great step forward for the city as well as for the nonprofits. Okay. That's, oh, and like to let you know what contracts and plans I signed on your behalf with your permission from Resolutions. So we extended the intergovernmental agreement with Garfield County for the Northwest Regional Collaborative Shared Regional, that's a lot of regionals, I didn't notice that, Eligibility Technician. And so that's where the nine counties in the Northwest all pay Garfield County. And Garfield County has an eligibility technician who manages overflow for Medicaid applications, which is really helpful. We haven't used it that much this year, but in the years when we have used it, it's like insurance for us. Then we also, I signed a fifth amendment to the IGA with Garfield County for the Community Services Block Grant. And just a reminder that all of these I signed with John's approval. And those funds pay for our outreach coordinator for food and Medicaid, food in particular. And, and then we also have to submit a core services plan around child welfare program. And so we submitted the second of a three-year plan. Next year will be the third year. It's every year we have to affirm how we're going to use that core allocation. And we use it for alternative treatment, like horse, the horse And we use it for alternative treatment like horse, the horse programs, animal therapy, music therapy for children who are involved in therapy as well as some life skills and home-based services. So all of those were signed on your behalf and that's, that's it. I was wondering Lindsay, could you formally introduce Audrey? Because we've introduced everyone else and now we have a new finance analyst.
Yeah, it's good, we have two minutes, so I feel like that's, we're so excited to have Audrey and I'm going to let Audrey speak a little bit. She comes to us from Garfield County, working in their finance department. We're really lucky that she has that experience, but I'm going to let Audrey do her, tell a little bit about herself and how she comes to Picken County.
Thanks Lindsay. So yeah, as she mentioned, I was with Garfield County Human Services in their finance team for over seven years. And so now I'm joining the finance team for Picken Human Services. I do obviously have some background in the human services world, so that's my sprint to the table and I'm excited to make a lot of processes and strides here at Picken County. I look forward to working with everybody.
And we're so excited to have Audrey on the team and we're really excited when we can poach the great people from Eagle and Garfield County. That's how we get a lot of our staff. So I'm very happy about that.
It's amazing, people still like you so much Nan, you keep stealing all their goods now.
I know. Funny because I live in Garfield County, so I can see the loss for Garfield, but I'm all on the Picken team.
Okay, very nice to meet you.
Are there any questions or concerns or anything that would work better for you as we move into the Board of Social Services meetings this year? We meet again in, in May for a first quarter report.
Steve?
Ma'am, this has been really an awesome review of what your department does. And I know you did a lot of it for the benefit of Francie this time, but I think once a year we should do the same thing just as a refresher. So it's a long meeting, but I think all of us have a better understanding of the things that we've been deciding four times a year for eight years, that's 32 times I've done this so far.
It takes a long time to learn this, I tried to tell that to Francie, like be gentle with yourself because this is complicated. And things don't sound like what they are. So we will make sure that we do more review. This past year, we tried to go a little faster because you were busy and we were busy and so we've captured 90 minutes for every report and we'll try to make sure we make time to explain what the programs are. Please feel free to ask because these people, you know, these are exceptional technical managers that we have on this team and they can explain all of it.
Great, thank you Nan. Any final questions, Francie?
I just want to say thank you to everybody, I really appreciate it. It's incredible the work you do, it's really impressive and it obviously affects people's lives for the better. So thank you so much, thanks for the time you took for me today.
Thanks Francie.
That's a great wrap-up. So I will ask for a motion to adjourn the Board of Social Services, please.
So moved.
Thank you Greg.
Seconded.
Thank you Francie. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
And Francie, we're going to quiz you.
Thank you all.
All right, nice to see you, Human Services Department, you guys all stay safe and take care.
Thank you, thanks everyone, so good to see you.
Thank you.
Take care, have a good time, bye-bye.
I said we're going to quiz you on acronyms.
Yes.
Okay, so we do have a break scheduled, I need to run to the restroom for just a few minutes, but I want to check in, does the board need a full 15-minute break? I see we have our next presenters on the line.
I just need to step outside, outdoors for one minute.
How about five minutes, okay?
Let's do 10 minutes.
10, okay.
10 minutes.
10-minute break and so we'll be back at 2:40-ish.
We just stay in this meeting.
Thanks grassroots.
Picture of your lovely daughters currently.
Yeah, that's, that's the girls. Ellie and, there we go. They're quite a trip. So I'll go through this pretty quickly. So basically, this is the statute that guides the coroner's office and it's evolved in the last, starting about, I think about 2000. So what we did is we started, well, before then, you can get elected or in the, in the home rule charter counties, you can be appointed, and that was it. Zero qualifications, zero responsibility for ongoing training. You just had to certify the manner of death of, of people who died in your county. And so that was pretty, pretty basic. There are some other aspects of the law that was written in statehood, which I'll show you here in a second, which are still in effect. But what happened over the years is we created the Colorado Coroner Standards and Training Board, and we require training now of each coroner and each deputy coroner, as well as at least certified death investigator certification for the chief coroner. I also require that of all of my deputy coroners. And that's, you know, quite a process to get through to get that certification. And then we instituted the new coroner institute. And I was on the initial faculty of the first one. It's kind of like when you get a new sheriff, they have to go to the new sheriff's institute, so they have a little bit of an idea what they're doing. And we did the first one about, it's probably been about seven years ago now that I participated in the second one, which was three years ago. And so that's an ongoing thing. Further legislation that was passed, maybe five or six years after that, was requiring an autopsy in certain types of deaths. So this was an unfunded mandate from the state, which really hit some of the smaller and poorer counties hard, is that they had to hire not just pathologists, but a board-certified forensic pathologist to do the autopsies and mandated that they're done on a whole bunch of types of cases that they might not have gotten an autopsy on prior to that. We currently use Dr. John Carver, who's based on the Front Range in Jefferson County. Fantastic service, it's just it's far away. So for a deputy coroner to take a body there and back and attend the autopsy is about an eight, 10 hour day. So anyway, basically, just running through these statutes really quick. Any, any kind of death, and if you jump down to 1B, when no physician is in attendance, what that means in Colorado is that an intended death, there's a doctor taking care of you for a disease, which is a natural disease process. Does not mean that he's physically there, or he's even seen you in the last week or anything. It just means that he knows you, knows why you died, and will sign the death certificate. And basically, every other type of death in Colorado is a coroner's case. So, and then there's obvious ones, if you have a death in custody, which we've only had one of those in Picking County the whole time I've ever been here. The 1.1 that's highlighted there, that's new as of, I think, two years ago, which has increased our caseload as well. Any death that occurs to a person who had their original illness or injury start in Picking County is Picking County's case. So these are all of the patients which are substantial, that we fly to St. Mary's or to the Front Range, level one hospitals, and they die there, and then that's Picking County's case. Let's see, nothing too exciting there. Another of the top ones, the subsection C is new, is we work with law enforcement in a more documented fashion to determine who's going to take custody of the suicide note. And then on E, this is also very new, and it allows the coroner, in a non-criminal case, to take custody of electronics without a warrant. So we can get the computer and phone to help determine the cause and manner of death. For example, a week ago today, I was doing that to try to see if I could find a suicide note on a computer and a phone. So it's very helpful, some of these new laws. The, yeah, the top part, we, you know, take the medications and dispose of them properly. Tons of, you know, just, as you can imagine, all the paperwork and the logistics of doing a case are so much more than they used to be when the coroner had no statutory responsibility but to fill out the death certificate. Let's see. I just copied all of this from a previous presentation, so I'm not sure it really has any pertinence to today. Medical records, where it is kind of a unique thing, we're entitled to any sort of medical record, private counseling record, psychiatric notes, that sort of thing, but we have to treat them like imitalo. We cannot pass them on to other people, but we can use them for the purpose of the investigation. The coroner does what? The original law was, was written so that the coroner is a peace officer that also carries the same authority as a district judge for ordering arrest warrants if someone kills someone, for issuing subpoenas, or holding a person in contempt for failing to comply with subpoena, and then ordering the sheriff to put them in jail for doing that. So obviously, those, that part of the law was written as statehood and has not really changed. And then the coroner is, is the statutory responsibility to act as the sheriff if the sheriff cannot do so, or if the sheriff is arrested in, by a county warrant. A longstanding joke between Bob Broaddus and Joe DeSalvo and I is like, well, we'll both retire on the day that happens, so. And then the coroner versus a medical examiner system, so there's a great front line reports, you know, that National Public TV show about death investigation in America, and it's shocking. There are states where you can get away with murder literally so easy because there's no requirements, or the system is so screwed up. The coroner system is, I would say, middle of the road. It's antiquated, but with the statutory changes in the last 15 years, 20 years, it's gotten a lot better. And in Colorado, we have gone to great lengths to make it work. There was a huge push about eight or 10 years ago to switch to a medical examiner system, which, in which you're a state officer and you're regulated by a chief medical examiner's office, and that's a good system, too. And then there's hybrids, like Montana, where Dr. Rob Kirchman, the forensic pathologist from Grand Junction we used to use, has moved there. He's the chief medical examiner for the state, but he's in charge of all the coroners, but they still have coroners in each county. So pretty interesting stuff to me. Subpoenas, we've only, we've done this a few times. And coroner's inquests are usually the scenario. The coroner's inquest is a fascinating tool, don't use it very often, but imagine if you could have a grand jury that overnight could be, be put in place and have witnesses show up compelled by law to testify, because the grand jury, by the time it gets around to doing anything, you know, the people have changed their story, they've left town, they've destroyed documents, they've closed their business, who knows what. In a, in a coroner's inquest, we issue subpoenas to jurors and witnesses and for documents, and tell them when to show up in the courthouse, and we hold a hearing, which is basically just to get to the truth of the matter of what caused the death. So it's, it's mandated by law in a coal mine death. Don't have many of those in Picking County anymore. We had a few when I first got here, but we have no active coal mines, I don't think, in the county anymore. But, you know, for a case where there was criminal negligence in a business or a house fire or something, it's a good tool to have available. And we work with law enforcement and the DA if we ever do that, but it's pretty unusual. So now, on to what's not really spelled out in the statute, but we're, we do. I mentioned the coroner standards and training board, the new coroner institute certification. We also work with the Picking County Child Vitality Review Committee. The Colorado Violent Death Reporting System, which is a, if you haven't ever looked at it, as morbid as it sounds, if you want to know about suicide in Colorado, or any kind of violent death, don't look at this website. It tells you exactly, in fantastic detail about the suicides, for example, it's a big topic in our county. In Colorado, they collect, and we participate in this, they have about a four-page questionnaire, and gathers a massive amount of data trying to, you know, help people in the future not suffer this illness. And it gives the stats for the whole state, and, you know, you can see where Picking County falls in that at any time. So electronic death registration, everything's done online these days, and it's a great system, but it's a little bit cumbersome. It requires some training and dedication to use it. Unidentified bodies. So Audra Keith, who is one of our main deputy coroners and has the most experience and would be the person in line for this job we're going to propose later, she was instrumental in identifying the Linnato man by gathering up all the data she had, working with Brad Gibson in the sheriff's office. And if you don't know, the Linnato man is of some bones that were found in Linnato in the 70s, that when I came here were still in the basement underneath the sheriff's office in the, down by the old jail, and, or I guess it's still the current jail. And down there in a box next to Ted Bundy's BW backseat, where he committed a murder. And we had these bones forever, and then Audra took it on, and using the NAMUS, the National Association of Missing Persons, was able to, with Brad, to come up with identification for the person. And then we found, we had found bones, and this is now public knowledge, about a year and a half ago, up the frying pan, and through a very long process and using a forensic anthropologist, we were able to get an identity on the person and determine it was probably a homicide, gunshot wound to the head, and, and then, and then using some other information to link the, because there was some confusion about the data we had, we thought it was the wrong person, and Audra, and again, the sheriff's office was able to use their skills and computer skills to figure out who it was, and we were able to return the remains to the family, which was just done a few weeks ago. Forensic autopsies, as I mentioned, we currently use Dr. Carver. And then other things, the obvious stuff, reports, that goes on and on and on, and also working with the ESFA, I didn't include that in there, but a big part of what we do. Personnel updates, so Eric Hanson, one of our longest-standing deputy coroners, who was taking virtually all of the call this last fall, because we're shorthanded, he retired in December. Michael Buglioni went on reserve status last year. And Audra Keith, who lives on the Front Range for the last number of years, has still been extremely active. She actually is arriving today to take call for the rest of the week. She's our most experienced and trained coroner. She has been numerous certifications as a death investigator, and she spent some time working for the Adams County Coroner's Office. They do like 13 cases a day and five homicides a week. So really, she got, gets more experience there in two weeks than you would in Picking County in a year. Kevin Hadfield was a former jail deputy. He joined us about in 2019. He's fantastic. I mean, the guy is just, he's stellar in everything he does. He's currently in nursing school and is not really available. And then Rob Glassmeyer, who has done a lot of our mutual aid in the past, he said, hey, Steve, instead of me doing a mutual aid, why don't I become a Picking deputy coroner? And, because he has a number of investigators working for him, and he would have the time to drop what he's doing, and we just poured him in on February 1st. He's been on backup call for me off and on this month, as I've been in the emergency department for my other job. So just to kind of bring that all together, a day in the life, this was one week ago today, my day to sleep in, because I'd had a few 12 and 13-hour ER shifts, and was supposed to go to work at 3:00 that afternoon. First case was at about 8:00 AM, that I got called up in the, near the intercept lot. About the time I got back to the board with the body and literally had started typing the report, there was another call in Snowmass Village. And I had a meeting at the hospital at noon, and it got delayed to about 1:00. I brought that decedent's body back to the hospital. And met with a vendor to look at this demo of this vehicle system that we're looking at. And then I got cleaned up, ready for my 3:00 PM shift, and I was pretty exhausted, so I called the, the 11:00 PM doc, and he said, I'll come in at 8:00 PM. And he got there, and I was trying to finish my ER patients when we got the third case of the day, and, you know, I wasn't home until the next morning. So this is not a common occurrence. It happened twice in December, though, where we had three key cases in one day. And to make matters worse, in that case, the vehicle, Kevin Hadfield was in Jefferson County getting an autopsy, so we had no vehicle, no deputy coroner, and I managed to shovel things by phone from Denver, where I was that day, and with the help of the Aspen Ambulance Service, and, and we were able to, you know, get it worked out. But there are cases like that, and so I think that's all I have here. I want, so this is the statement that I put together for you guys. It's all in your package. If it is, I'll, I'll get out of this screen. So I can see your face. There we go. So that kind of brings us to, you know, what I'm proposing, and we, we've been functioning, we've always functioned with our other jobs, you know, as have to be primary to some extent. And so over the years, there's been many times that I've left the ER, had another ER doctor come in. And my goal in the last like 20 years was to not do death investigation scenes myself. I'd seen enough of it by then, and that's when I, you know, started having enough deputy coroners, so we could all, you know, pitch in and help out, take call. And that model has worked for a long time, but in the statement I wrote up, you know, I pointed out that we just can't keep people on board. We've had several sign-ups recently that bailed on us, either due to realizing that if you get a call, that you're, you're going to be spending the next several days dealing with that. I mean, the three cases I had last Tuesday, I've been on the phone all weekend with the family. I gave up two ER shifts and a shift at the Basalt After Hours Clinic in the last week, so I could work on the coroner cases, and still, we're still working on them. It's just, and we want to do a good job. We want to do the right thing, thing for the family. We want to be compassionate. It takes a lot of work to be compassionate in this business. It's very easy to do things and just, you know, cover the bases, but that's not what I've ever, you know, promoted. What I've always said, any deputy coroner, and to anybody we talk to, that this job is about the living, it's not about the dead. It's about knowing what happened to your family member, knowing if they had a disease that affects you or your children, knowing, you know, getting info to the life insurance company, so the family has something to live on, getting statistics to OSHA and to the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, so next year, if a car or job site is safer. There's so much about the job that's critical, and I've always emphasized to the deputy coroners, you, you, you do all these things, and you fill out the four-page questionnaire on suicide, because this matters to the rest of us and to the living. And not that the dead, you know, obviously need the respect and everything done properly, but it's, the job's really about the living, just like everything else we do. So, and the last two years with these personnel challenges, COVID obviously was difficult because it makes every death investigation, it has to be done much more carefully. We haven't had that many COVID deaths in the county, but we've had a bunch of other deaths that I think probably will be in the future, what are referred to as pandemic deaths, deaths caused by the pandemic, not the disease itself. People who would not go to the hospital because they were having chest pain for two days and died of a heart attack at home. And we had a number of those cases. So with that, with the, we've had lapses in call, the training requirements are getting more demanding all the time. And then, for whatever reason, in the last two years, we've had a 50% increase in our caseload. So we're just, you know, getting burned out, not able to keep up, and I don't think this model's sustainable anymore. I'm good friends with Carabettis, the Eagle Coroner, and Rob Glassmeyer, the Garfield Coroner, so they both run two to three times the number of cases we have, but they have full-time investigators. For example, Garfield County does 2.7 times the number of cases. They have two full-time investigators, one part-time investigator who works 24 hours a week, two deputy coroners, and I'll tell you the difference between those jobs here in a second, who work, one 10 hours a week and one, I think, just two hours a week. So in counties that are not home rule charter, they're bound by the Colorado statutes on what they can pay their coroner and deputy coroner, we're not restricted by that. So in the big cities like in Denver, and, well, Denver's actually exempt because they're home rule charter, but like Colorado Springs, they, because they can pay any wage that's necessary to have that job filled, they call them death investigators, and that's what they do. They just do not have the authority of the coroner to act as the coroner, to sign death certificates, to do any of those things that has, has to be done by the coroner, whereas deputy coroner has the authority to do all those things. So in Picking County, we would probably call up the full-time death investigator, the chief deputy coroner slash death investigator. And I think that, you know, the thing that I wrote out that you guys have probably read or seen already, pretty much explains, we just, the current model, I just don't think is going to bring us into the future and allow us to do our job as good as it needs to be done. I think I, I saw a quote by Kelly about what can we strengthen for the next crisis? This is one of those things that even the next crisis might just be a bus crash, or five cases in one day instead of three, or it might be another disease, who knows? But these are, this is an identifiable thing where we can make things better, and I just, like I said, I think that in the long run, we're just not going to be able to keep this model going, so that's why we're asking for this employee.
Okay, thank you, sir. And I'll just say, it's nice, thank you for presenting so thoroughly, because I think this is the first time in my two-plus years that I've met you or have heard about the coroner's office, so it's been educational for me, and I appreciate it. So I do want to check in with the board and see if there are questions right now. Francie.
Steve, I'm wondering, I, I read that this would entail a 10% reduction in your pay. So would you stay on as coroner, and then you would have a full-time death investigator?
Yes, pretty similar to what Garfield County, how they operate, so I would still manage, you know, just the management stuff, I guess you would call it, and not, I would still go to scenes, and I do, even when I had enough deputy coroners to do most of the cases. If there was something unusual, tricky, a homicide, or we just couldn't figure out the scene, and my expertise, being a physician and a death investigator, would help. So I would still do that. It was a guess that my hours would be reduced by 10%, because I'm doing a lot of the stuff that this person would do. I think in reality, it would end up being more than that, once we get, we have a hit list of things we need to do for the coroner's office that's pages and pages long. And everything from like, like really cool things like that Audra Keith brings to the table, like this is what Adams County gives, it's a brochure for the, the family who's, you know, it doesn't matter what you tell a person, the same thing in emergency medicine, you're talking to someone that just lost their family member, they don't remember anything. And we really haven't figured out a way to do this. Well, Audra brought this to us, we want to work on this project for our county, and it tells them everything, what happens to the body, how do I get a death certificate, what's an autopsy, what's toxicology, how long does it take? And, and I spend, I spent all weekend on the phone with, with family members from all three of these families, going through these things, and something as simple as this, but we have a list of things like that. Once we get that list underway and things calm down a little bit, I think my hours would reduce even more than 10%.
Okay, thanks.
Sorry, I lost. Can you still hear me?
Yes, we can hear you fine. Other questions, Patty?
Yeah, there you are. I just, my old computer, this, been a plaything for the children.
Well, Steve, this is more of a, more of a comment than, it's not a question. Again, I want to thank you, as Kelly did, just, you know, being updated, actually for me, really updated as to, you know, what the coroner's office does and what state statute does, et cetera. But I, I see no reason presented to me today, I know Connie hasn't spoken about budgetary impacts, but I think this is a necessary position. If anything, when it comes, I would like to have maybe a six-month update, once you have somebody that's up and, up and running, just to let us know how it's going, and any, any things you see that might be different than the presentation today. So that's kind of where I am. My medical background, I know what it takes. I know how hard you work, and I, and I've been there, and it is about the living, and how to get people through circumstances such as this. And it really is a matter of who's responding to these situations and, and how they can deal with people, and we want to provide the best to our community members and our visitors. So thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
I see Steve and then Greg, please. Steve Chow.
Dr. Ayers, thank you for your presentation. I've learned more today than I ever knew about the coroner's office, and what your duties are actually, what you have to do. I'm curious, if we get the full, full-time deputy working for you, would the other people who are just doing part-time work and coming over from the Front Range, they would no longer be doing that on a regular basis?
Correct.
So? Emergency standby basis, or what, what was that?
Yeah. So what I, so this person would replace, for example, if, if we did a retrospective way to look at what hours it would cut for last year, it would, it would cut all of Eric Hanson's, take care of all of his call, all of his salary, he was our most active, and Kevin Hadfield, it would take about half of that, and that fits in with what Kevin can do in the future as well. He can't take call in for extended periods of time. It would replace 100% of Audra Keith's hours, because she would be in that position if this worked out, and then some of my hours. So yes, those other, so what we would end up with is a full-time death investigator taking roughly 70% of the call. Kevin Hadfield, in one of these stomach nursing schools, he'll have more availability, taking some of that call, and then myself, and then occasionally Rob Glassmeyer from Garfield County, maybe vacation, fill-in, things like that. I'm envisioning with that number of people, we would manage to handle all of the calls as long as we do not have a caseload increase again. And if we did, then it's, it's a lot probably cheaper, not necessarily easier, because I've tried it, to put in another deputy coroner who would take call part of the time and become a certified death investigator. And there are a number of qualified people, police officers in particular, that are currently interested in that position, but it would replace two of the previous positions and half of another one, and 10 or 20% of mine, as far as hours.
Okay, and then it sounds like that seems to remind that they, they've really been going above and beyond what, what they want to be doing anyhow, so you're not taking work away from someone who?
Oh, no. No, everybody's going to have a smile on their face up there. And the thing is, is that what it's going to do for those of us who do take call is, that's going to be our only, it'll be during my, you know, I do shift work as an ER doctor, so I have four to eight-day sessions off. I can take call three of those, knowing that it's not going to take away from my ER hours or inconvenience my partners, or worse, you know, leave a body lying on scene for seven hours till I get out of the ER, which has happened. So, and please, call me Steve, by the way. A couple of you have mentioned appreciation for the update, that's my bad. If I was like elected coroner, I wouldn't be the coroner, because I would, if somebody went out and put a sign up for me, I'd probably say yes if I won, but I'm not a politician, I don't like doing stuff like that, but I shouldn't be doing this on a more frequent basis, so I apologize for that.
Well, some people, commissioner, title, that person called me governor. Titles are, can be humorous sometimes.
All right. Mr. Foxman, I think you had a question there?
Yeah, I think so. Go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, great. Steve, great, great to meet you, your name, I've known your name forever, but I don't know if you've ever spoken, so it's really good to see you here. And, and as Steve said, yeah, this is very enlightening, I, there's so little, I knew so little. I wanted just to, to make sure that, a couple of questions. One was, it looked like you had some people you tried out, and they just didn't make it, they didn't last long, and they flamed out for one reason or another, I don't know if you want to elaborate on, maybe it was just it wasn't, the pay wasn't good enough for the hours, but the, and the other thing is, is the budget you presented here really going to be enough? Are we going to need additional, you know, expenses to keep things going as on an ongoing basis? basis? Are we going to be looking at other expenses that aren't in this projection?
Yeah, so, why, so two of the people who kind of flamed, or three of the people, let's take three. So one person retired, but there were some personnel issues, we just, it was better for all and, and it was a, you know, mutual thing. And then we trained one person who was a physician assistant and she's very qualified. We spent about six months, we sent her to some death investigation courses, got her radio and her badge and all the stuff. And the first part of her death investigation training completed and she never took call. She just realized what taking call, you know, what you might have to do at two in the morning and then come home and drive to Denver the next day and then spend another day or two dealing with the family. Just, she just decided it wouldn't work and, you know, that was maybe my error, where I recruited the wrong person or I didn't explain the job well enough. But I had known this person for a very long time, so, but that's not an uncommon thing when you get closer to actually doing it, you realize, oh, that's not maybe what I really want to be doing tonight. And then the other person is another common scenario. It was a deputy coroner from Garfield County who had, was part-time there, so had a lot of time to cover us, but then because it's a second job and not a primary career, she took another job with Garfield County that was full-time and then could not do it. And that's a common scenario too, when you have part-time deputy coroners, they, there's always the possibility they're going to get rid of a way to something that suits their main career. And then, so the only expenses that, so they're unrelated to the personnel position, but there are other things that will be coming up in the future that I want to come back to you about. One is, I'll just mention briefly, and because I want to show you the presentation, when you see it, you'll, you'll, it's pretty amazing, but it's a hydraulic lift system to put a body in and out of the coroner's vehicle. And I have a video that I just watched this morning of the first body from a week ago today. And it shows myself and four police officers, sheriff's officers, and one Aspen police officer trying to get the gurney into the back of the van. One guy hits his head, two of us pinch our fingers. And in the emergency medical services world, 50% reduction in back injuries from lifting with my devices, all of our ambulances are equipped with these. They make a cheaper version for, for our purposes. It's about maybe a little more than half of the EMS version, but, so that's something in the future I'll watch you guys to look at because it's extremely difficult to get the bodies in and out of the vehicle, even with the nice gurneys that we have. And then the other thing would be, if this volume keeps up, in the future, we'll probably need a second vehicle because when our vehicle goes to Denver, it's completely out of commission for, you know, the whole day. And if we have another case, I was able to work with Gabe Muthing on having the ambulance guys transported to Stephen's body in December, but that's not something we want to be doing on a regular basis.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Steve?
If I could, if I could jump in on the budget for just a moment. Also, the cost presented there is an estimate at the moment. HR has a preliminary job description and they're still working on grading out a position. So there could be a little shift in that cost depending on what HR determines.
Thank you, Connie. Steve, did you have another question?
I mean, I can relate to trying to load a dead person into something. I had to help one other person load a guy onto a saddle of a horse to carry him out one time. It's very difficult. Having the right tools for your grade is worth the money to put into saving people's backs and whatnot. I totally understand that. And I, I mean, I really can see the logic in putting more money into this now. Our population is probably much greater now than it has been in the past because of the pandemic. I think a lot of people have moved here to their second homes and I think a lot of them maybe won't go back to where they came from originally when all this is said and done. So you will have more potential customers going into the future for, that you have to be called on. By making this step now, we are setting up a different model than you've been operating on that can be replicated by adding another person at some point if necessary, doing the same kind of logic we're doing now. I think it would be easier to expand as the need arises in the future. So from what I've heard so far, without looking at the numbers real closely, I mean, it's got me convinced.
Thank you.
Okay, and since we do have a little extra time, I just wondered if I could understand, if you could teach me a little bit more, Steve. With regards to the access to data, this is something I've wondered about, and so thank you for presenting some of that. But as a policymaker, if I wanted to, to, you know, figure out how many opioid deaths we've had, or, or maybe look at why do we have a 50% increase, you know, in caseloads? Is that, is that accessible in kind of a real time, or is there always like a year lag to how that is all reported?
No, we, and that's another good point I did not mention, so Audrey Keith is the deputy coroner that I mentioned that is the person qualified and available, I think, for this position, potentially available. She helped, we, I started a process, oh gosh, I think it was in 2000, that's when I was, to go to a online record-keeping system, a web-based, I mean, a cloud-based system, which we did. And we, we got such an incredible deal, it was like a four grand or five grand to start and we paid $900 a year. Well, the deputy coroners have been complaining about it, and now that I've been using it myself in the last year or more, I under, I see. And then in 2014, 15, they lost all of our data when there was that Google breach, and we really didn't get much of it back. But one thing with records, and it kind of goes to what you're saying, we only have to keep records, I think it's five years or something we can purge, I never do that. In fact, when we got this cloud-based system, we spent 10 or 12 years retro, going back and entering all the old case files that we got back from file finders that I had stored because this, this stuff is a goldmine for, for everybody from safety engineers to healthcare to doctors, this, all of that data is just incredibly valuable. And so we have 837, and I just looked entries into the system now, and that's most of our old, when I became the coroner, the coroner's office was a beat-up old suburban with two cardboard boxes in the, in the back and a gurney with three wheels. And so we, we didn't have all those files, all the old stuff, the Spider Savage files and all that stuff are long gone. But, so we can pull up instantly, you know, the number of cases that we have currently, the cause and manner of death. Cause is, you know, the cause, so, you know, cardiac disease, gunshot wound, hanging, head injury. The manner is homicide, suicide, accident, natural, or in some cases, undetermined. So we can pull that up pretty quickly and then specific things like the suicide data. We had some people who pulled up that data, this was a number of years ago, and we gave them everything we had on the suicides and they did their own statistics and came out with some suicide rates that were pretty high. I didn't really know, but then I, I met with the Violent Death Reporting System Data Entry guy for the Colorado Department of Health and looked at our data and the state data and the national data, and, and it was shocking and amazing. You know, Picking County, the state of Colorado is divided into five zones for suicide, five being the highest, one being the lowest. Picking County is right in the middle, we're at three. Now, Colorado is, is significantly higher than the national average for suicides, but Picking County, and in fact, the, these key area counties, Summit, Eagle, Pitkin, and Garfield, those areas are kind of all, I think, level three. The level five, the highest, were like Adams County, north part of Denver, the San, the, the, is it, what's the valley down in central Colorado?
San Luis.
Yeah, San Luis Valley, that area is high, and then some areas out by Grand Junction and Delta, but, so that data is available and, and we can certainly help you, so you get access to what you want. We, we do, I, you know, I'm really negligent. I did not mention Audrey Keith has been our administrative assistant, she's not a deputy coroner, and she's been with us forever and she does a lot of this like stuff, the data mining, paying the bills and all of that. I keep trying to talk her into being a deputy coroner, she doesn't want to see dead people. I do not blame her, but she's great in what she does.
Did you mean Roya?
Roya, what did I say? I said Audrey, I said Audrey, I'm sorry. Roya Beckley, yeah. And Roya, if you're watching, I owe you a dinner somewhere, so, sorry. She's been great, she works part-time and, and she can get all that data for us.
Okay, I really appreciate that, thank you very much. And I'll just check in and poll the board to see if there's more questions or if we have direction on Connie and Steve bringing forward the budget supplemental next week. So looking for questions or approval for that request.
Well, I think it'll, I think it's going to come back to us next week.
Next week.
As part of supplementals, right? And then we'll...
We just want to give direction that that's okay.
Yeah, but I mean, it just, there's a process here, Steve. But I do have a question about suicide, something I've been trying to get information on for quite some time. When they always, you know, people are pointing at Picking County and we've heard we're the highest in the state for suicide rates. And I've always asked for the differentiation between suicide, the victims of suicide that actually live in Picking County, or those who are visitors to Picking County. Because we have some percentage, I think, of suicide, people for some reason come here to commit suicide because they're out hiking, it's beautiful, this is a place where they, they want to pass on to their next life or whatever. And I think that would be interesting information. So we'll talk about that at some point in the future.
Yeah, I'm available on your next, that next Tuesday, I'm pretty sure I'm not working that day if you do need to ask more questions.
Thanks, Steve.
Okay. All right.
Thank you all.
Yeah, thank you, nice to see you. We'll see you next Tuesday with the formal budget supplemental. Oh, yeah, Steve, sorry, go ahead.
$4,300 setup, first time, one-time setup cost.
We assume that there would be possibly a computer purchase or a phone purchase, supplies or maybe some training. So that's just the typical setup costs with a new employee. In this case, if it's someone who's already working with Picking County, we may not need that cost.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, Steve. All right, thank you.
All right, take care.
Nice to meet you. Thank you, you too.
Thanks for all your...
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye, Connie, see you next week. Okay, so we're running ahead here by about 15 minutes. John Peacock, are you ready to provide your COVID-19 update?
Yeah, I'm sure I can eat up that 15 minutes.
Or we can go home early, which, you know, it's fine too.
Give me just a second.
Sure.
Are you all seeing my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, it's hard to see you guys. All right. COVID update, my screen won't shift, there we go. Talk a little bit about metrics, give a vaccination update. We'll also actually, we'll talk a little bit about the Board of Health meeting, the major question that will be in front of the Board of Health is the traveler affidavit. What is not on the agenda, we'll also just give a quick update on the business grants, where that process is, and then questions and discussion. And if you get this comic, you've dated yourself a little bit. So, in terms of the metrics, this is a screenshot from the state website this morning. We are solidly in the yellow, but I'll have a caveat for us on the, on the next slide. But where the state data has us is just, just into the yellow on our incidence rates and in blue on our positivity and hospitalizations. Pretty similar trend with our local data with a caveat. And that caveat is that the majority of our testing right now is through MicroGen, that's through our partnership with the state and Dr. Allen's practice. The lab that's processing those tests is located in Lubbock, Texas, and it has been affected by the winter weather and the power outages, and we have had a significant backlog. We don't have an exact count because the, the MicroGen contract has, has been extended over the three counties. We, we know that there were at least a, a thousand test backlog in the Roaring Fort Valley, but that's inclusive of Garfield and Western Eagle and Picking County. We are expecting to see that backlog get, get made up and processed through this week. We're starting to see some come up. So we're, we're expecting that we'll see some positives out of that and our numbers may change a little bit. So more to come on that. We're being impacted by, by that weather in the Midwest. Other than that uncertainty though, our numbers continue to look very good. Any questions on that before we move on?
Steve?
Well, when we get the numbers back from Lubbock, Texas, there'll be test data from over a longer period of time. Are they going to be averaged out per day so it won't, won't, it won't show a spike on ours, but it'll be perhaps raised in the draft of so many more new cases per day or something? How's that going to look?
Yeah, so that's going to have to be a discussion with CDPAG. They typically use the date of the lab report, and so obviously, we're going to have probably a lot of tests compressed into a smaller number of days. So we'll have to add the conversation. We track the data a few different ways, so we track it by when a specimen was collected as well as the, the lab report and then by symptom onset. So we'll be looking and, you know, I think if we see based on sample collection and such, that that would not have pushed us over with the typical turnaround time, we'll have that conversation with the state. Obviously, if we, you know, are showing that we, you know, go up under any of those measures, that'll be a different conversation, but right now, we've, we've been, you know, pretty consistent in that 130 to 160 kind of range. Any other questions before we? So vaccines, we've been moving into our 1B3 stage. That includes frontline essential workers and people aged 16 to 64 with two or more comorbidities. And, and the state has a list, I do not have those for you for today, but we can certainly pull that, pull those up. We're starting to work through that 1B3 priority by first outreach to employers of frontline essential workers. We're now focusing on grocery stores and food pantry, food bank folks, essential human services and public health. That will include clergy, it also includes our nonprofit community, as well as our own human service and public health employees who have been previously qualified. Public transit, so we're working with RAPD, postal workers and frontline journalists. And so right now, we're working through those lists on, on registration and we'll continue to, to move it through. and we'll continue to, to move it through. We do have a new webpage up that has data on it. This is a screenshot and it'll pop out there. This is a picture of our tent, our mass vaccination clinic, when we were doing the, the rounds with the schools and the teachers. Total doses administered are just under 5,000 so far, including just over thirty-three hundred first doses and just over sixteen hundred second doses. We've had more Moderna than Pfizer overall. And you can see kind of our, our weekly trends, first, second, and total doses. Of those, twenty-nine hundred are residents, two thousand sixty-four non-residents. That may be employees who work in Picking County but do not live in Picking County. And some of those are essential workforce components that, that we've been vaccinating. And Colorado's established really a no, no wrong door, if you will, as long as you qualify within the phases. Just real quick, pop out, we do have, you know, vaccine information as far as getting notifications and sign up and where we are, as well as on our data dashboard, you can go out and see information. This is information on Picking County residents and then overall vaccines administered in Picking County. So, if you want to track our, our progress, we'll be updating that after each of our vaccination clinics. Okay, are you...
I don't see any questions. Any questions, anyone? No? Steve, go ahead.
Just, when's the next flight?
Thursday and Friday is the week.
Yep, so, great segue, Francie. So, vaccinations this week. We'll be running a first-dose clinic on Thursday. We have, we estimate we'll be able to give eleven-hundred-and-seventy first doses. That's based on us being able to pull additional doses from Pfizer vials. And then on Friday, we'll have a smaller second-dose clinic. We, those will mostly, I believe, be Modernas.
Steve, you got a question? Go ahead, please.
Well, I'm looking forward a little bit. I think we're going to have a different problem pretty soon. All of a sudden, there will be more doses than there will be people wanting. Because of people accusing of taking the virus. Right now, you have a ready pool of people waiting in line, but we'll have a different problem pretty soon. I'm anticipating how you will deal with that when the time comes.
Yeah, well, we're already certainly talking about that and have concern about vaccine hesitancy, you know, in making sure that we get the number of people vaccinated, you know, to a, a, a critical level that really helps us control the spread of the, the virus. And so, you know, that's, I think we're estimating somewhere between seventy-five and eighty-five percent that would be our target for that. And that depends on how, you know, if there's more virulent versions, I can't get that out of my right. You know, you, you obviously, the higher the percentage of people vaccinated, the, the more you're able to contain and reduce the incident rates. So, we are working on communications, both through employers, but also, you know, through our Latinx community and such. We're, we're, we're seeing some, some hesitancy. And so, yeah, we're, we're working on those types of communications. I think, Steve, as we work through these levels, we're going to work through as, as many people as we can get registered and open the next level because we do want to get vaccines out. If, for example, we didn't get all the educators, so we do have some folks who are, you know, we've offered again to be vaccinated in, in this round, but they're prioritized with, with everyone else. And so, we, we hope that as we move on, that we'll see higher and higher compliance and people that were maybe hesitant to get it until they see, you know, how it plays out with everyone else, that, that we'll see them get vaccines in later stages. But we're going to keep opening it up and getting vaccines in arms. None will go to waste.
Okay. Yeah, and we have even friends of ours, talked to different people, relatives who are anti-vaxers and just are going to use it to get the vaccine. And I'm getting kind of upset with that attitude because, I mean, I'd love to spend some time with some of our friends who are anti-vaxers. And yet, I'm thinking, I don't really want to even be, be with them when we can get together socially and if they haven't been vaccinated. You don't get vaccinated so much to protect yourself, but to help protect everybody else. And I think that's the issue. We need to try to get people to change their thinking on why you get the vaccine.
Yeah, and, you know, AVH has been such a great partner throughout this. And part of that partnership has been engaging the medical community in, in messaging, you know, their willingness as, you know, medical professionals to, to get the vaccine. And so, we're hoping some of that messaging will, will be effective and, and some of the other messaging that we're doing. For, for those who may not be anti-vaxers, that, that's a different, that's a more difficult conversation. But there are those who are just hesitant sometimes because the vaccine was developed so quickly or that it's new and they're wanting to know that, that it's safe and, and doesn't have long-term consequences. Certainly, the vast majority of our medical community has felt very comfortable with it and is sharing that, that message. And again, we hope as we get more vaccines out, comfort levels will increase and we'll get higher, higher and higher participation.
Well, and I would just offer, you know, Steve, that personal conversation is really like the best of method and approach for trying to convince people. Like, your message as a friend to somebody about your concern for them and your concern for your ability to spend time together, like, carries a lot of weight and is, you know, I think, a public health strategy for how you convince people to think of it otherwise. So, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't hold back from, from having those conversations in the sensitive way that I know you would have them and for anybody else who's running into that, too. I would say, you know, John, I hope, I would like to encourage, now that the, I think, phases are opening up to more essential workers, that we consider targeted vaccine clinics in our Latino neighborhoods. Because I think, you know, there, there, the state has set aside ten percent of the vaccines to deploy. They've made the offer that they will bring people up here to run those clinics and, you know, administer those. And we have local partners in Voices Unidas who have successfully done that in Garfield County. And I think that, you know, that could be a really effective way for us to, you know, engage with the Latino population directly on the vaccine campaign. So, I think as we can capture more people, which I'm thinking this new phase with essential frontline workers does, now would be a good time to consider it. So, I would make that request.
Yeah, and Kelly, I just note that I know the IMT and public health are looking at how we start to expand the, the number of clinics and availability. And so, they, they are working on those options right now.
Okay, thank you. Steve and then, or I'm sorry, Francie, and then back to Steve.
I was just wondering if you know anything about plans whereby employers can expedite their employees getting vaccinated? Like, I don't know, I'm thinking like City Market and restaurant owners. Do you know anything about that?
Well, so, I, in Picking County, we've been working directly. So, as we've identified those essentials, say, like the grocery workers, our incident management team has actually worked directly with the grocers in the community to get staff lists and counts on how many would, would need to be vaccinated and are interested in getting vaccinated. And then that rolls into our registration. So, we've been coordinating directly with the employers as we've been targeting. So, this week, we've been working a lot with the grocers, the food banks, Raptor, nonprofit community for, for human services and such. There's not a consistent methodology across counties right now. So, in some cases, employers are being asked to have their qualifying employees register with whatever institute a provider, a registered provider, whether that be a hospital or pharmacy or whatnot. We have chosen to centralize that so that we can be a little bit more planful and, and track the vaccine, vaccinations a little better. But it's going to be a little bit different in Eagle and a little bit different in Garfield.
I see. And I can't remember, do restaurant workers ever come up as a favorite group or they fall in with the general?
So, we are steering that restaurant workers will be included in the 1B3, but we haven't seen it come across yet, I believe, in, in the prioritization from the state. So, we think that, our understanding is they're going to be added in this current phase.
Okay, thanks.
That, that, that's what we should anticipate.
Steve?
So, something you said, Kelly, triggered a thought in my mind. Because people in the Crystal River Valley were asking if we could do a vaccination clinic down there so they wouldn't have to travel clear to Aspen. Perhaps we could do a joint clinic with Garfield County and the town of Carbondale, which could capture a lot of the Latinx community there, as well as Crystal River Valley residents from Garfield and Picking County. Who could go to Carbondale and, you know, save on their, just make it more convenient for them and capture a lot of people.
Yes, I know those are discussions that are ongoing. We're, we're fairly stretched getting the eleven-hundred or such through in one day here. I believe Garfield now is just, because they've been working through the hospitals, through Valley View and the, the rifle hospital, and are now looking at setting up clinics. So, I know we're in discussions about how we can coordinate with Eagle and, and Garfield County. But we've all had slightly different approaches right now. So, we're, we're looking at those opportunities to get some stuff going forward.
Okay, any other questions for John right now? Not seeing any.
Okay. So, the question that's really going to come up for the, the Board of Health meeting has to do with the traveler affidavit. I think you're all pretty familiar with it. I just wanted to give some background and, and some context to the conversation. And then also what public health staff's recommendation is going to be so that you all can talk about that and, you know, provide some, some position from the board for, for Greg and Patty as they're participating in, in that meeting. So, as, as you probably recall, it was adopted on the Fourth of December, made effective the Fourteenth of December with the idea that it would run through the end of April, get us through winter, and then we would reevaluate where, where we were at, at, at that point. And that we probably would not run it through the, the off-season, but, but look at in the summer again when, when you have a, a busy travel time. The affidavit requires all persons age ten or above to receive a negative COVID test within seventy-two hours of coming to Picking County or be fully vaccinated. So, that is, I, I believe, two weeks after the second shot for the Moderna and Pfizer vaccines. Alternatively, you can quarantine when you get here or quarantine until you get a negative test here. But we encourage the, the test before you come. It is really self-reported online. We do not manage a copy of the, the lab results, partly because we did not want to manage medical information for as many people as we're anticipating would be filling out. The, the affidavit, our lodging properties have really been our main partner in communicating the requirement to anyone booking one-night stay or, or more. And as of yesterday, we had just had under seventy thousand affidavits completed. So, a, a good number. We're still trying to figure out exactly or estimate what our number of visitors were for that same period to understand, so what percentage complied with the, the affidavit. We find that a little bit more challenging. I think you all have seen requests and memos coming through, particularly Agra and the lodging community requesting reconsideration of the affidavit. Specific concerns that have, have been raised include that there seems to be some confusion between aligning with the state dial, but having, still having the affidavit requirement in, in addition to it, that there's just some confusion and, and more challenges with compliance with, with people coming in. I, I think the, the lodging community is concerned that because Aspen has the lowest occupancy rates of, of resorts according to the latest Rocky Mountain Lodging Report, that, that is in part due to the, the affidavit requirements. We do not do a, a lot of enforcement or compliance verification around the traveler affidavit, which has caused some, some frustration. And, you know, they're, they're concerned that having an affidavit requirement sends a message that we, we are not a safe community, even when our metrics are moving into, to more safe levels. And then there's concern about the, just the, the word, the legalese or term of art that an affidavit may, may imply. You know, looking at the benefits of the travel affidavit, you know, it, it definitely provides a, a direct link for education on our COVID requirements. We know nationally, there's not a lot of consistency about COVID requirements, even between counties within our state. There's not always a lot of consistency. And so, as people come in, having gone through the process of going through the affidavit and such, we know that for at least over sixty-nine thousand people, that meant we had a direct touch point on the requirements of our public health order. We also know that we have a, you know, touch point on our requirements around quarantining if you don't have a negative test and/or quarantine requirements or isolation requirements if you do, do become ill while here and simply not traveling while sick. if you do become ill while here, and simply not traveling while sick, just basically understanding our public health requirements. The idea, of course, is to prevent introduction of new sources of virus by ensuring a negative test. We don't have real data on this, because what we have are affidavits of negative tests. I think we have anecdotal information that people did get tested and chose not to travel here, did not travel here because those tests turned out to be positive. And I, Greg, I think you've shared, you know, some national press that's been positive through, you know, actually multiple articles in multiple publications where it's been some positive, I think, press. When staff was putting together its recommendation, there are some additional items that were considered, looking at the CDC recommendation for traveler testing requirements. The CDC did not necessarily recommend a negative test, per se, and that's partly because of the oversight and such to really make the program work. As I said, we've had fairly limited oversight and enforcement, which was one of the ways we dealt with that. The CDC has adopted testing requirements for international travel, which is checked prior to boarding a flight, very much in line with what we're doing, but has not adopted a domestic traveler test requirement. There's been some talk about that, but we haven't seen that yet. You know, there is some consideration that an affidavit may be of more value when an incidence rate is low rather than high, because when it's high, you have so much transmission already happening within the community, it may not have as much impact as when it's low.
Hey, John?
Yeah.
Pardon, sorry, Kelly.
Go ahead.
Could you just go back a page to the fourth bullet point, or the third one, just one page back? I'll go forward one more. But yeah, it says CDC has not adopted a domestic traveler test requirement, but does recommend against travel, and I think does recommend testing when the three days prior to travel. Is that what you meant by that third bullet point?
Yeah, yeah, thanks, Greg. That's a little confusing. So, yeah, CDC's recommendation is to do what our current affidavit requires, which is they recommend that if you're going to travel, you get a test within 71 to 3 days prior to travel, and obviously if that test is positive, you don't travel. If it's negative, you've reduced the risk that you're going to be an additional vector for that community. Yeah, it is a little confusing now.
Sure, Patty. Patty has a question.
Yeah, John, I'm going to let you finish what your recommendation is, but then I, having attended the ACRE board meeting, I need to share information with the Board of County Commissioners, but I'll let you finish this one, just, I want to make sure that I get time to introduce that.
Sure, sure. So, staff's recommendation to the Board of Health is going to be to retain the traveler affidavit through ski season, basically, but to follow the CDC guidance of no longer requiring but recommending a negative test. There's value we see in requiring the travel affidavit for the purposes of that educational component and having a touch point for folks to understand the requirements of the public health order and the recommendation for testing. There's not a lot of good data that we could produce around requiring the test, particularly without a strong system to check, in which the CDC says is maybe not the best place to put your energies right now. It should be spent on getting vaccinations done and your case investigation and that sort of thing. And then, so it would be a change, a modification of the travel affidavit to make the test optional, and then work with hospitality industry, create a task force to think through what makes sense for the summer, where are we? ACRE did send an email today, and this may have been after-
It was after the meeting.
Patty, the meeting today, so sorry, I'm going to look away just to, they're recommended, they had two recommendations that aligned fairly well. First is they recommended that the program align with the CDC recommendation for travel, which is to recommend a negative test, not require a negative test. And then the second, they would love to see the affidavit program renamed to something like a traveler awareness program, or something that provides a little bit different connotation to it. Staff hasn't taken a position on that, because we just received that recommendation. I just wanted you to be aware that would come up on Thursday, in case you wanted to talk about it.
Okay, I want to, um-
Then you may have some additions.
Yeah, let's check in with Patty, and then we'll go to Francie and Greg.
Yeah, this was a long discussion at ACRE's board meeting. It was a discussion, and then when members of the board got their chance to speak individually, almost every member touched on this affidavit issue. And it was the recommendation that it not be required as far as testing, that it be follow CDC, so that's great. A lot of concerns were the fact that nobody's checking, that, you know, I got checked going, boarding at United in Orange County, only because I needed assistance in changing something else, so somebody came to me in person that no other people were checking for any records, which I had records, but, so there's a little frustration there. But I think ACRE is very supportive of taking it as a recommendation per CDC to test, and they really support the educational components of this, you know, letting people know what's required when they get here, as far as restaurants, as far as lodging, as far as masking, social distancing, all of that stuff. ACRE was very supportive of that. As far as changing the name from affidavit, there's been a lot of people that ACRE has heard from, outside of what we may have heard, that are, say, I'm not signing an affidavit, I'm not going there, why does Pickin County think they're so much better than every other scary in the country, if not the world, that they're pushing people to do this? So, there has been some positive national coverage of this, but, you know, there's also the negative out there, and again, we need to look at both sides, not just take all the positive or the negative that supports our position. We need to have the diverse conversation. So, I think where staff is going is in a right direction, as far as where ACRE would like to, you know, see this affidavit, or whatever we call it in the future. As far as the extension of it, ACRE, there was talk about having it end a month before the end of the ski season, but I think if we make these changes now, as far as changing it from being required to recommend it, changing that verbiage a little bit, I think ACRE will support it moving on. I'm not sure we should, you know, pull it in April, if it's now just a better document, more aptly titled, to not, you know, make people angry in some cases, or to scare people off in others, but to keep it as a way for lodging and restaurants to refer people to, so they can get the information that we want them to have when they come here to visit, or when they are here visiting. So, I think those are important points that ACRE was really pretty across, literally across the board on today. So, I think this is probably moving this decision in the right direction, but I think there'll be more said from ACRE board, or ACRE representatives at the Board of Health meeting on Thursday, but I'm glad we're having this discussion now, the Board of County Commissioners, so we can have a unified voice, hopefully, going into the meeting on Thursday.
Thanks, Patty. Francie?
So, if they don't have to have a negative test, what are they attesting to on the affidavit?
Yeah, so, it's really the testing to both understanding the rules and requirements in our community, and that by traveling here, they're agreeing to abide by them, or facing the consequences of violation of the public health order, so-
What consequences?
In a way, Francie, it's more of a communication tool.
I thought there were no consequences.
That's something that's been thrown out there on the affidavit, and it's made people nervous. You could be fined up to $5,000, and people are saying, why would I want to go to a community with that risk hanging over my head? So, that, but that's a fact, they could be, but are they? But the fact is, they could be. So, if somebody was blatant about getting sick here, not following the rules, you know, not isolating or quarantining or being tested once they came up with symptoms, then we could pursue that on the legal level and fine them, or put them in jail, actually, or both, and that was bothersome, I think, to ACRE also, so.
Thanks, Franc- so, we have 10 minutes left, I just want to be recognized, because we do have our applicant on the line.
Oh, yeah.
Thanks, John. So, Francie can, did you, if you have a follow-up question, please, go ahead.
Yeah, I just was, it seems to me that if, if they're not going to have a negative test, that it would only make sense to have something, so I assume they get this when they make a reservation or something, is that correct? So, then it could just be an education piece, which would not scare people off, and might be more effective, actually, because you might get a more willing participant than somebody who's annoyed, or whatever. I mean, maybe some people would be really happy that they have something called an affidavit, it would make them more likely to travel to Pickin, but that combined with the fact that the New York Times is still saying, if you look at Pickin County in the New York Times, it's still saying it's very high risk, so that combined with an affidavit, I would think is a pretty strong disincentive to come to Aspen, and so, I would, I think I would be in favor of making an educational piece, that if you're coming and staying at, I don't know, the Gant or whatever, you should be aware that these are the COVID restrictions which are in place in Pickin County, the ski areas are operating in this way, restaurants are operating in this way, because it just doesn't seem without a test that it's much of an affidavit, anyway.
Well, John, just to answer that, currently, if I'm wrong-
Sorry, Patty, but I do want to, we have 10 minutes, and I want to give a full conversation here.
I know, but this is important, because Greg and I need to have direction from the board before we go to the meeting, so Greg's on on one side of the room, and I'm on on the other.
And I have direction to give, and so does Steve, so I'm just going to let everybody have a chance, and then we'll finish our roundtable. Steve, please go ahead.
I was at the meeting today with ACRE, so let me just say, the lodging community does-
I don't appreciate this, Patty.
Okay, I'm sorry, Kelly, but this is important.
I'm running the meeting, I'm trying to give everybody a chance to speak, we now have eight minutes left.
I won't say anything.
Okay, I will come back to you. Thank you, Greg, please, then Steve, then Patty.
You know, I think the points are well-taken. It does make a certain amount of sense to align with CDC. I think that if people have a problem with the word affidavit, then we can call it the VIP pledge, or something, it's fine, we can, if it's a matter of communication, let's figure out how to communicate this better. But I think what the message that means to make sure is people understand when they come here, that we have a standard of civic behavior, which involves masking and distancing, and yes, people are getting tested, and they are getting vaccinated, and we're taking it very seriously. If we can make that message strong, and that we are concerned about the health of our visitors, as well as our community, you know, perhaps that would work better. I do understand that people say that the $5,000 fine, even though it has never happened, is, seems onerous to people, and it doesn't quite seem rational to me, but I'm not the one canceling my reservation. So, I think I understand it, I like that the ACRE has come up with a recommendation that is something that seems, it seems reasonable to me, and it sounds like our staff is on board with that, so I'm okay with that for now, as long as our messaging is very clear that this is what we expect from our residents and visitors, and we want, we invite people to take the pledge, that they will get tested, and they will get vaccinated, and they'll be safe before they come. And so, I think that there's a way to get through this, to do it satisfactory. I'm not sure it's going to solve the problem that ACRE and the restaurants have, because as Francie pointed out, the New York Times still has that, you know, high incidence rate rating, and who knows how long it'll be before that actually changes on their website, so that may be the bigger lift, and the more important lift. And then regarding the summer, yeah, I think we could start now developing a plan for the summer to get people to take this pledge, and if we don't see another uptick or variant coming in, perhaps that will be good enough. But that's where I am right now.
Thanks, Greg. Steve?
Well, I think it would be, make a cleaner message to people if we are doing the same guidelines as the state of Colorado on the CDC recommendations, instead of doing something different by requiring an affidavit. And you described it pretty well, Greg, I don't need to repeat it, but the communication piece to make sure that people get the message that these things are really important to do if you are going to travel here. My biggest fear is if we get a outbreak of the variants that causes a huge spike again in our community, could be the result of having, it probably will come with someone who flies in here, bringing it with them, who didn't comply with, you know, they didn't get tested, they ignored the educational piece that we sent. They could do the same thing with the affidavit, just, they could sign the affidavit and not have, they didn't get the test, they just lied on the affidavit, so the same thing could happen with our current system. So, my feeling is, we'd be better off to simplify the message and have it comply with what's required across the country, or what's recommended across the country. We're taking a risk doing that, but I think it would be simpler for the public and the lodging and everybody if we changed our system now.
Thanks, Steve. Patty?
No, no, we only have three minutes left, so I don't know if John's finished with his presentation.
Okay. Well, then I'll weigh in here, just quickly, you know, I feel like keeping the, calling it the same thing allows us to leverage the press that we've had related to it, which has been positive in a lot of ways. You know, I think, on one hand, we're saying, let's follow some CDC guidance, which says, don't require a test, but we're glossing over the other CDC requirements, which says, don't travel. So, you know, I actually feel like our program has struck a balance there in trying to do that, and, you know, I don't, I'm not sure, in the community, since we haven't followed up on requiring proof of the test, if eliminating that now changes much, but I do think that the opportunity to educate people is incredibly important. I think we can link to our vaccine information of, you know, just demonstrating that our community is getting healthier, if that's helpful. So, that's my input on those things, and, you know, I do, Patty, want to honor your opportunity to reply to any of that, or Greg, if you need clarification.
Well, I was just going to answer Francie's question, if that's okay, unless John wants to do it. The lodges do, when you make a reservation, they refer people to the affidavit into the county web, public health website, on all reservations that are made, so that information gets right out there, so.
Okay, Greg, go ahead.
I was just going to say, I think it'd be really great if we could point to the success we've had, and the number of people, I'm shocked, I was telling everyone we had 60,000 people sign the affidavit, we had an extra 10,000, it seems like, in the last week, which is, maybe they're getting ready for spring break, or something. So, it looks like, you know, people are still signing this and taking it seriously, and even if we just make it a recommendation rather than a requirement, and we take away the onerous nature of the fine, I think we can still point to the fact that we've had so many people pledging to do this along with us, because they're concerned, maybe that will convince people to take it seriously, and that's the most, the most important thing is that people take it seriously, if they're planning to travel anywhere, it's not just here. So, I think that there's some opportunities for messaging here, and we can still get the effect we want, and since we can't measure the results anyway, it's been really hard, you know, I understand why people are so frustrated with it, so this sounds like a good compromise to me. Now, I just want to be clear-
Now, I just want to be clear. Staff's recommendation is that the traveler affidavit is still required. You're just not going to get the negative tests coming in. And the requirement is around the education piece.
Now, is that the, and that's what ACRA is recommending also? Is that correct?
I, I think, I think what I've heard is that ACRA is satisfied with that. Their big concern, I think, was the negative test. And they'd love to see the, the name changed to something more positive, like make them an affidavit.
Francie?
I, I, that's not what I heard necessarily, John. I thought I heard Steve, I, I didn't hear Patty's opinion. I heard her say what ACRA said. But I thought that Steve and I had both said that we weren't going to have something called an affidavit, that we don't need it. And that without the na, without a test, it isn't really anything that they're saying they're doing. But we support having an educational piece that comes with their reservation. Steve, am I wrong? What do you think about that? Did I mishear you?
No, Francie, thanks for asking for the clarification.
Well, I think, I'm having a requirement, but being, the educational piece, we still have to be putting out the message and having it be a voluntary thing, I think, would be a way we could still be getting the message out. This is what's recommended. Take away the $5,000 fine, which isn't going to happen probably anyhow. So that's, that's my thoughts.
I want to check in with.
I just want to be clear. If it's required in the public health order, then affidavit be filed, that, that consequence is still potentially there. You know, it hasn't, it hasn't been realized. Because that's, it, it is what it is. That's written in state law also, so we don't get to rewrite that. I think the, what, what I'm trying to get clarity on, because I think I'm hearing different, different things, is, you know, what, what staff's recommendation is to Board of Health. So you have public health staff recommending to the Board of Health, is that the traveler affidavit still be required, that a negative test not be required as part of that. And, and the idea of having it required is, you know, to sign off that, hey, yes, I understand. This is what I have to do as a, as a guest in, in Pittkin County. It's a little bit more of a marketing tool. And Francie, I think I heard from you and Steve, yes, that possibly, well, we don't need a travel affidavit at all. That, you know, we just let the, the lodging community continue to market. I don't know that, that's what I heard from the other three. I just wanted to make clear, make sure you understood what staff's recommendation was to the Board of Health, so that we're clear on what you all are, are talking about with Greg and Patty before they go into this meeting. Sorry for the confusion.
So are Greg and Patty clear?
No.
Okay, so let's suss this out a little bit more. So I think the question on the table is.
I want to tell you what I heard, and then you can tell me if I heard it correctly. I think what I heard between Kelly, Greg, and Patty was roughly, yes, supporting the, the recommendation that the traveler affidavit still be required, but that there'd be a relaxation of the testing requirement to what the CDC is recommending. I think what I heard, a, as Francie had indicated from Francie and Steve, was that while we're relaxing the, the testing requirement, maybe it's better to, to move away from the affidavit requirement and just continue marketing our, our public health requirements here and not have an affidavit or a signed document. Is that correct?
Patty?
That's what I think I heard.
Yeah, well, I, I think where we're going is that we want to recommend not require testing because the testing result time isn't working for people. It's either three days or seven days or nine days in some cases. But, and as far as calling in an affidavit, what do you attest to? We could say, not a VIP thing, but this is a statement, you have to, lodges and everybody could, could tell to the people that are booking a reservation, you need to pull up the website, you need to, to read the statement of education or something like that, what's required in Pittkin County, and that you need to sign it, that you have done this. You have pulled it up, you have read it, you understand it. So you would be attesting to doing that effort, making that effort. And I think that's clear. As far as requiring an affidavit, I think ACRA's concern was more, should we require it through the rest of the season? Should we lift it? But ACRA totally supports having some document there to educate people on what's required when they get here as far as the basic to five commitments.
Sort of like a terms and conditions.
And so if you called it a traveler's pledge, we just have an affidavit.
Or a statement of understanding or something. Yeah, I think that's where, that's where I'm going as far as, and I, I don't think ACRA, but I can't speak for the whole ACRA Board, will it be an interesting question, if they would, would allow that or accept, I should say, that it continues on even past April, maybe, because it's, it's worthy of what it's supposed to do, and that's to educate people on what we are recommending and requiring in our county when they come to visit us.
Okay, Steve, and let's try to wrap up here.
I could agree with that. Having the affidavit be a traveler's agreement, that they looked on the website, they understand our rules when they get here. They understand that they should either have had the vaccinations or been tested as recommended but not required kind of a thing. So it's more of a guidance instead of a requirement. But if, if we keep the traveler's guidance form that people sign and agree to before they come, I'm okay with that. That's less, that's onerous of appealing to people. A lot of people, I think, don't think they need to get tested because they were sick earlier and they, they already had the virus, or maybe they know they have the virus. They don't want to be tested again because they assume they have some immunity to it. So there's all sorts of things like that that come into play too. But doing a, having them still sign something, I'm okay with that.
Thanks, Steve. Greg, do you feel clear?
I'm, I'm clear and I'm, I'm going to trust John to have gleaned what he needs from this, and then we can go over it. But I'm, I think I see where this is going and I'm, I, I'm okay with it.
Okay. John, is there any other pressing COVID-19?
Not pressing. I can update you on this later. But just know, we've received 109 grant applications, 84 recommended with grants between 5,000 and 25,000. First round notifications went out last week, and second and third round notifications will go out for the weekend this week. So we'll, we'll talk more about that next time. But success.
Okay.
Much appreciated, success.
Greg, thank you, John.
Kelly, just to, to follow up on that, I, I did say it earlier, but I wanted to repeat, but I think it'd be really valuable to point, well, if we're going to reframe the text in this pledge, or whatever we're going to call it, that we make sure we point to, that we, we'd have, you know, a huge number of people go along with this, and that we think it's, it's helping educate and keep the community safer. And I think that if, you know, the public messaging is going to be real important, and I'm hoping that some real effort is put into how this is framed, so that it's not completely disregarded, and that we don't have the hotels and restaurants saying, oh, don't worry about this anymore. No, it's more like, no, please check this out. Please, please go online and we'll take it seriously. And I think, I think if we can all do that together, then I, I think that'll satisfy our public health people and, and allow them to move forward without this, what seemed to be a real, a real filter, to filter out people who are so worried about being fined $5,000.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I, I think so.
Okay, let's move on. We're 10 minutes behind now.
All right.
Okay.
It's okay, it's all important stuff, right?
Okay, so our next item on the agenda is a Citizen Board renewal interview with Chris Wheatley, who serves on our Healthy Rivers and Streams Board. And I see that Lisa McDonald, our staff support for that board, is here. Lisa, did you want to introduce anything? Or I can welcome Chris? What would you like?
Sure, I can. Charlotte typically takes this over. And so I'm going to fill in for her, just to introduce the agenda item for you today. So, good afternoon, everybody. I'm McDonald with the Healthy Rivers Program, filling in for Charlotte. And this is an interview with Chris Wheatley for the Healthy Rivers Board. Chris currently sits on the board and has been a member since May of 2019. We have three openings on our board, and the VOCC interviewed current members Lisa Taster and Andre Willie on February 2nd. Advertising has been ongoing since October, and we've only received three applications that the commissioners have seen. So that's a quick intro. And I think with that, I can turn it back over to Kelly to proceed with the interview.
Thank you. And hi, Chris. Nice to see you. Thanks for your service on the board thus far. What we'll do is we'll invite you to talk about why you're interested in staying on the board and, and any, you know, presentation of your qualifications you'd like to offer. And then we'll open up for a roundtable of the VOCC members to ask you questions.
Absolutely. Thank you for having me today. I have thoroughly enjoyed my time on the board, doing more than sitting on a board. We actually, just looking at water. And I think it's been, just in the last year with the pandemic, a very interesting time noting people getting out into, into rivers and streams. And I think our organization is only going to become more important. Listening to your previous conversation, I think, you know, maybe sign an affidavit and like bring water with them. That might be a really good thing for us to do. And, you know, growth is, is an essential question. And thank you for your service in addressing. And I think maybe that growth impacts itself most immediately and dramatically in questions of water and quality and everything else. And I have to say, just in my time on the board, oh my gosh, do I appreciate the Crystal River and it being the only undammed natural river in our state. And to, to, you know, I want to say, see that stay the same. And maybe, you know, I guess my passion now is seeing how much water I can keep back in, you know, we can put back into rivers and streams. And, and, yeah, and maybe you have to respring it with.
Love that idea. So Patty, you have a question? Go ahead.
Yeah, Chris, just really quick. I just want to thank you for, for your being on this board. It's fun, I know. And Lisa does a great job. You guys get to do some exciting things, and we're hoping to continue to support that in the future. And I, you know, I just, I just think we're looking at the river and, and water in so many different ways with Healthy Rivers and Streams. And I really appreciate that knowledge and understanding that, that you and the rest of the members of the Healthy Rivers and Stream Boards bring to the table. And I think the dynamics right now of the members of the board is something that I plan to keep intact through the next, the next terms. So I'm not going to tell you welcome aboard again, but I wait to see what the rest of the boards says, but welcome aboard again. Thanks, Chris.
Okay. Other questions for Chris from board members? Steve?
Chris, you mentioned getting back to acting and performing again. And I'm, I'm curious what, could you tell what you do in your act and when, when you have those opportunities?
Well, I'm kind of waiting for theater to open again. And who knows if, when, how that's going to happen. In the interim, I, I did a voiceover for a video game. And I did a 50, I'm part of a 56-minute version of Macbeth, which you can see at HudsonReadEnsemble.org. And, yeah, I provide like a minute of comic relief. I won't go butchering. And, yeah, that's, that's pretty much it. So, yeah, I hope to do it, but I don't really know how or when. And I certainly am in conversation about how maybe this could be applied towards promoting some Healthy River and Stream action here as well. There's some venues that I think are being explored for that right now, actually. Well, I could see you becoming a poster child for the Healthy Rivers and Streams Board. That here is one of our board members who is acting as Macbeth or whatever, whatever character you are playing. In your spare time, you're doing that along with your duties. Now, I have to tell a kind of a comical story. Your, your comment about having everybody bring water with them when they come to Aspen. I was at a Colorado Counties meeting in Colorado Springs, and they have bottled water there. And I'm reading the bottle. I was curious, where did this water come from? Well, it was bottled in Denver, which I presume meant it came out of Dillon Reservoir from Summit County. Went through the tunnel to Denver to be bottled. It was carried to Colorado Springs for me to drink. So I'm leaving Colorado Springs, driving home, and I, I said, well, I am going to wait to use the restroom until I get back to Summit County and get their water.
Absolutely.
Flush, slice, and Aurora.
You guys are too funny. Okay. Other, other comments or questions of Chris? Greg?
I, I appreciate this. And I, I love the idea of, of getting people to bring their own water, but they could also bring beer, you know. As, as long as they're not allowed to board the plane or leave the valley with it, then I think it has the same result, really. So I, I support that. And there was, there's some humor in that. And it might be the sort of thing that would be great in a, you know, I was just thinking, Chris, we could use your talents to, to get the water messages across. And, and whether it's online, or messages that we promote and produce through the county, or who knows how, I think that would be great. And, and we could put your talents as, both as a creative thinker and writer and humorist to work, as well as using your acting skills. So I think it'd be great. And I did see you at Macbeth, and you were the comic relief. And I, and it was really great to see you in that show. And I'm thinking about the, the show, what, a couple summers ago down in Basalt, where you, once again, you're the cow, you were a cowboy version of, which play was it? I can't remember.
Taming of the Shrew.
Taming the Shrew. And it was spectacular. So keep it up. And I think we should be trying to use your, your talents. You know, Lisa, let's come up with, you know, something there. I'll help. Thank you.
I also think I would be remiss in not thanking you guys and girls and everyone. In, in other interactions, perhaps with other county organizations, the appreciation of, of water and natural resources might not be as heartfelt and sincere as this board. And so thank you, as a citizen of Pittkin County. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Is there other questions for Chris about his application to this board? Francie?
I just want to say thank you, Chris, because I know that serving on citizen boards is time-consuming and can be contentious. And, I mean, you have a pretty awesome board that you serve with. I'm sure you guys get along pretty darn well. But anyway, thank you so much for doing it. And I'm happy that you're willing to do it again.
Well, my father always said, the mind can absorb what the butt can endure.
Chris, it'd be fun to serve on a board with you.
Any, no.
Any other questions or comments for Chris right now? Okay. I don't have any. You know, thanks for your service.
And cherish Lisa McDonald.
Yeah, we do. I hope. Hope she knows.
If you can put her in a lockdown order in the county, that would be really good.
So we have our three applications. We will, I think, confirm our directions, and then you guys will hear the final decisions, which I think will be positive. And then we pass a resolution pointing you to your future service. So that's what the steps are forthcoming. So thanks, Chris. We'll be in touch. And I know we'll all be working more closely together this year. So that's exciting.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks, everybody.
Hi, Lisa.
How are you?
Okay. Moving on to future. Okay, moving on to future agendas. John, do you have any future agenda items?
Yeah, I've got a few things for the board. I believe tomorrow we will be adding an agenda to the item, which will be an emergency resolution adopting the I G A with Garfield County. That'll be brought forward by R I. So just know that we'll have an addition tomorrow. We had a request from Agra, Sarah Reynolds at Agra, to present an arts and culture impact study. It's about a 30-minute presentation. We're looking at March 23rd, April 6th, or April 13th for that. Waiting to hear back from her, so we'll probably add that on, under community presentations. Just a note that our citizen board renewals are in progress. We set aside time on each March agenda for necessary interviews for those, so you'll be, be seeing that. We did miss on future agendas, the upcoming joint meeting with Open Space and Trails that has now been added. And then finally, we are going to need some direction so that we can set a resolution for appointing our citizen board members. You all have done now three interviews. You had Lynette Connor for Senior Services, Lisa, I'm sorry, four interviews, Lisa Tasker and Andre Willie for Healthy Rivers and Streams, as well as Christopher Wheatley, who you just interviewed. So now, the board's prepared to give direction on those, or if we need to set other time aside to talk about those appointments?
Let's check in. Patty?
Yeah, I was going to bring that up under open discussion, because I'm comfortable with all four interviews, and would like to support them and move them forward onto a resolution, probably not tomorrow, but the next meeting, which I think is the 10th.
That sounds good to me. Steve?
I'm so comfortable with reappointing the three and appointing Lynette to the Senior Services Council.
Greg, I see a nod, and, okay. I think you have direction to bring that forward, probably March 10th.
And I have no other items for the agenda, because I already discussed them with John at Kelly's in my meeting on Friday. So thank you.
Steven and Francie?
So I had, I came to realize that on March 2nd, I have a possible time conflict. I'm on March 1st and 2nd attending the National Farmers Union Convention. The meeting will be wrapping up on Wed, on Tuesday morning, the 2nd. I don't know at what time it's going to wrap up, but I might be late in getting in with our, we're scheduled for executive session, and I'm not sure if that's with the Healthy River, I think that's with the Healthy Rivers and Streams Board, if I'm not mistaken. So I might be late for that, but I need to finish my business at Farmers Union. And as you recall, last, last year, the 1st of March, I was in Savannah, Georgia, attending. So because of Zoom calls, I'll be able to be at a virtual conference that was supposed to be in San Francisco, and five minutes later, I'll be joining our meeting here.
And I think that was Open Space and Trails, right, on the 2nd? Yeah, okay, just to clarify that. Okay, Francie, sorry, go ahead.
I have some confusion about when meetings start. I always have to call Patty, because the invitations we get aren't actually when the meetings start. So can I get some clarification? Like, first of all, I got one thing for Open Space and Trails that said it started at 9:45, and another thing that said it started at 8:30. When does it start?
When we all get there.
And who knows?
That's a good answer.
Yeah, so Francie, there may be a difference. This is one that challenges with Zoom. We set up these repeating meetings with specified times, and the agendas are then set, and so it's best to look at the agenda document as far as when the meetings actually start. Because there, what shows up on your calendar with the Zoom invites are usually blocks of time that we're reserving out for that Zoom meeting throughout the year, and then we adjust the schedules weekly.
Yeah, I get that, but we also got something else from, about the Open Space and Trails. I get the regular, it says 10:30 or whatever, and then it changes, and, so I understand that part, but I'm pretty sure we've had two notices about Open Space and Trails. Maybe one of mine was from Open Space and Trails. It could have been that I got it from them.
Yes, the, the Open Space meeting itself, or the Open Space Board usually starts before, so usually at 8:30 or 9:00, before the commissioners join. So I wonder if that's the confusion there.
Okay, and I did have a couple of things of that not, are not necessarily for future agendas, but I just wanted to pass them on to see if it's something that you are interested in having in future agendas. I was talking to Pierre, somebody, who's the head of the Yama Caucus, I forgot his last name, and he has some issues from the Yama Caucus that he feels haven't been addressed. And one of them was the relationship between B L M and Pitts County as far as like RVs parking overnight, that's barely on B L M property, but it's like 20 feet inside B L M property. And so when he talks to B L M, they don't do anything. When he talks to the county, they say that's federal land. So that's something that I would like to figure out how to pursue. I don't know whether it's through Joey, or through you guys, or just through B L M. But that's one thing he brought up. Another one was the marijuana cultivation license, because we're coming up on the season, and I know it came up at a meeting, but I can't remember if anything was resolved, or where, or when it's re, coming up again on the agenda. And the third one was, uh, something, the house sizes, and there was just concern, you know, like everybody's had, about the house sizes, and the P and Z meeting yesterday made him wonder what's going on. And so I tried to find the P and Z meeting yesterday, and I couldn't find, I couldn't find it. So those are the three issues. So if you would just address the marijuana one first for me, John?
So the, um, we've got a couple of issues going, so the licensing, I'll have to check in with Jeanette as far as when that is coming up. But then there is also that the board was working through some potential regulations through the Attorney's Office, and it really had to do with the state legislation. I don't think that went anywhere, did it, Steve? As you were on that?
Well, there is more cooperation from the Colorado Department of Agriculture in terms of their, their process, has been streamlined and made more, so we are kept in the loop on that. And where it falls is for us, and John Ely has, I mean, he knows he's supposed to be working on land use, proposed land use code changes regarding the cultivation of hemp in the Ag Zone District. And so that's, I think, what the Yama Caucus is probably concerned about, the grow, the hemp growing operation on Yama Road.
Right.
That's partly in Eagle County, partly in Pitts County.
And I'll just note, that conversation on those land use code changes is scheduled for March 9th.
March 9th. What I, what I understand, sure, what I understand from my conversation with John
Ely about that is, is to check in with the board, get some direction with the board, and then those code changes would go out to caucuses for input.
Okay.
So that would be a good meeting for Yama Caucus to tune into, but just assure them that they will have direct, you know, they will be reached out to directly after that meeting as well.
Great, thank you. And then, the P and Z meeting?
I don't think there was one last night, was there?
Or maybe just the most previous one, so I was looking on, trying to find the minutes for it and stuff, and I failed.
Yeah.
Yeah, they probably wouldn't be out yet. Francie, I think the last P and Z meeting was the Tuesday of your retreat last week.
Okay.
And I would say, Francie, I don't think that they keep detailed minutes. They will, they record the meeting, so you could ask Suzanne Wolf for the recording to listen.
Oh, so it's not posted on the website or anything, you have to ask for it?
Yeah, because the meetings are just like, what did they vote on? What was the vote?
Okay.
Similar to ours, yeah.
Okay, great, thanks, guys.
And the other one was the B L M.
The B L M land issue, and so I can take, I can move forward on that if nobody has any suggestions.
I think it's going to be Brian Pettit, would he be a good one for her to touch base with?
Well, if it, if it's concerned about, is it camping that's happening on B L M, just near the county?
Yeah, but it's, it's like, one place he talked was the Crown Parking Lot, but then I think also just another pull-off place for him, not the, not the mountain biking parking lot, but the one up near the top I think he's talking about. And he's just talking in general that, you know, he's tried calling the county, and the county says it's federal land, you know, and so I'm just wondering if anybody has any guidance on that. I can't imagine B L M is going to come out and talk to one RV owner, but maybe.
Yeah, I mean, if it's, if it's, I'm having trouble placing exactly where it is, and usually camping is allowed on, on those B L M lands unless it has been specifically prohibited, in which case B L M would have to enforce. We have a I G A with the Forest Service and the Sheriff's Department on enforcement. I don't believe we have one with the B L M. And so I need to double-check with Joey on that.
I can ask Joe about this particular situation, because he's talked to Joey, I think, so. Okay, or I'll talk to Jesse or something. All right, thank you, guys.
Greg, did you have something?
Yeah, just regarding that, I recall when we had our board appointments, we discussed Forest Service and B L M outreach, and I think I was the one who appointed person on that. I have not talked to anybody at B L M, but I did have a lengthy conversation yesterday with Kevin Warner and Jennifer, who's the second, or Assistant District Manager at the Ranger District, on a number of different topics. And first of all, they just expressed their gratitude at having us to work with, especially while we're helping fund, you know, the additional Rangers up at Open Space. We talked about the trade, we talked about lots of different issues regarding controlled burns that they're planning for the spring, and, and the fire danger in our Wild Urban Interface. It was a good conversation, and I'm looking forward to continuing that relationship with them. But I'm, I remember we also talked about re-initiating the relationship with the B L M. I know we kind of had dropped that for a while, because it didn't seem to go anywhere. And so maybe, maybe this is an opportunity with this topic, Francie. I'm not saying it's something that I have to do and you don't, but I, we could, we could reach out to them and try to initiate a little meeting to discuss, you know, shared interests like that, because who knows, who knows what's going on? If it's legal, good luck getting anywhere. I don't know if the sheriff's going to go in and force on it unless they're really doing something egregious, so it might be, we just need to reestablish that relationship with B L M, and I'm, I'm interested in participating in that.
That sounds great. I met with Kevin also, and, and I was going to reach out to the B L M, and we'll move on with that.
Can I clarify something here?
Sure.
I thought we discussed the contacts we'd received from Kevin, and we decided that the board would sit with Kevin at a regular meeting, so we weren't going to do these one-to-one conversations with Kevin, so we're all hearing the same thing, and Kevin's all hearing the same thing. So he just sent me another text, so do I set up a special one-on-one meeting with Kevin, or are we going to approach this as a board? Because I'm a little confused now.
So the direction, as I understand it now, that we have as staff is to set up a meeting with Kevin, and then for the board, and then there's a further discussion about setting it up as a joint meeting with City Council to bring back the wildfire discussion sooner than your next joint meeting with City Council, as well as discussing some of the access issues around room bells. So we are working on, on that meeting.
And I would say, I clarified that with Kevin, like I said, oh, in this other thread, we discussed having you meet, and he wrote back to me and said, I still want to meet with you privately, which I have not scheduled, but.
Yeah, that we felt it shouldn't be a one-on-one, it should be the board meeting with him, so we're all talking the same language, and he's, he's hearing the same issues and opinions. So I'm still confused.
Yeah, it's funny, because when we were doing, who was going to do which job, I thought that I was going to be the person, be the contact person with the B, with the B L M and the Forest Service, because George had been, and then Greg was on it also, so I am confused.
This is different than that. This is Kevin wanting to meet with all the members of the board individually, and I thought we said we'd rather him meet with the board as a whole. I'm, I'm okay either way, I just don't know which way we're going.
Steve, did you have a?
So I reread that, his email too, and he does want to meet with us each individually to kind of get to know us personally better, like, for instance, when Karen Troyer was our forester, you know, I would run into her at various things, there was kind of a more of personal friendship that was beyond business. And I think that's kind of what Kevin wants to achieve that too, by just getting to know us better individually with private meetings. But still, we need to have the work session with the Forest Service on, you know, our official, so we know Forest Service is up to this summer for wildfire, and all the different issues that we have facing us. If it's important, we all meet together and be on the same page.
So I guess we're saying we should meet with him individually, and we're going to meet with him with a joint meeting?
If you care to cultivate that relationship with him.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, let's try and move us on. Any other open, or future agenda items?
I did miss one, Kelly. We will have the ratification of the Basalt Library Board appointment that Steve requested.
Got our agenda for tomorrow.
Yeah, we have it in the consent agenda.
That did make it on there, I didn't think it made it on there in time, I'm sorry.
No worries.
I did.
Okay, any open discussion items?
Just a note for the board, that the library has identified a rolling reopening plan starting March 1st with the Dunaway Community Room, and then they're going to watch data for two weeks and begin walkthrough browsing, and then look for open with, full opening with social distancing, but, but no meeting rooms, again, two weeks after that. So they've been working on, on their reopening plan and doing a slow roll with that. And that's all I have for open.
Patty?
Yeah, I think that's great, John, because with tax season coming up and availability of tax documents, they do have tax booklets out in the front lobby, you know, the anteroom there in front of the library main entrance, which is great, but a lot of people need to print out forms and don't have access to computers and printers. So I think with tax season coming up, we're going to have a lot of people needing to use, because the Dunaway Room is usually set up, I think, as the computer space. Is that correct? I think that's important at this time of year. So I think it's great, and then I appreciate them looking at that need for the community, because it's a much-used opportunity over there.
Steve?
Oh, if the library is reopening, then the employees would be more frontline workers, meaning members of the public. Are they, where are they in line for? Are they, uh, where are they in line for the vaccination protocol?
Yeah, so, uh, local government employees have been moved to, um, phase two, um, from the, the 1B unless they fit into some of the specific essential, uh, employees. But, um, we, yeah, for the most part, um, uh, county employees are in phase two and three.
Okay. Thank you. Greg?
Um, John, just wondering, uh, does the library have a protocol in place for allowing new people to come in through the door? Do we have a, a number requirement? Are they doing thermal temp, testing? Do they do temperature tests like a restaurant would? I'm just thinking we should have a standard of practice. You know, the restaurants have kind of taken that up and other stores have, City, City Library should too.
Yeah, so they definitely have protocols, uh, for use of that. And, and initially, it's really going to be the Dunaway Room and computer lab. Uh, as, as Patty said, there's the, that community need, uh, out there right now. And yes, there's all the social distancing, mask requirements, limitations, I believe, that during temperature spring.
Great. Thank you.
Um, yes, Steve, go ahead.
Oh, we are, are, we're on open discussion now, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Um, I just wanted to give a quick report on, um, my interactions with, uh, Williams Hill Translator System and Mountain Top Communications Site. As of a couple days ago, we are now on the Pitts County Translator System for TV, um, and we're canceling our satellite service for, for television. Uh, so I'm, I will be, and George had been watching that for years at his house, but now I will be familiar with that, so I can become kind of an expert in understanding that system, as well as being connected on the broadband system. So, I'm, we're no longer on the satellite for our, our broadband and it's been a much better connection, um, not getting dropped. I think I've only been dropped off one time the whole time I've been using it. So, I'm, I'm pretty pleased, all in all, with what Jeff Kruger and his team have, have been able to accomplish on that.
You're coming in loud and clear, Steve. Looks good.
Yeah, no internet unstable flashers. Um-
You know, if I could, Kelly, on the, on that regarding the translator and Jeff, um, I did see that Jeff, I'm, I'm gratified that he's going to report on the Starlink when he comes before us again, but also he noted that, uh, they've been inviting the community to get into the beta test for the Starlink system. Anybody who's in the rural area could try that satellite, new improved satellite system called Starlink, and, and kind of report back to us, almost like citizen science, so that we could really understand if it's, if that's an option for people and it will work. I think, um, that'll be important in some of the darker corners of the community or the valley, or the, the county. Um, so I just want to put the word out, if, if people are still thinking about it, that's something that we'd be interested in hearing, how it goes for them.
Um, I also, what did I want to say? Oh, um, John, I noticed that we did not, um, notice the CCI meetings for this Thursday and Friday on our agendas, which Charlotte has done for future CCI meetings. And it's probably because they changed the dates, but typically Francie and Steve and I are on those calls, so I don't know how we remedy that. Um, and you know, a lot of times I drop off and Francie gets on, like, it's not super common that we're all three on together, but it is possible.
When, when is it again?
This Thursday and Friday.
Uh, we have, we have, we can post it.
Okay. Um-
With the link?
Well, we just have to let the public know that we all might be on the same meeting.
Yeah, it's not for the public to link into. It's just to notice the public that there could be a core of the board.
Yeah.
You should have a link already for the CCI.
And those, maybe.
Yeah.
I don't have the one, so don't call me for that one.
I can always help you with that. Um, and I think that was it. Any other open discussion items? Okay.
Oh, one thing?
Yes, Greg.
Oh, sorry. Last thing is just, I should put it out there. Mona Newton, our Core Director, crashed skiing, was it yesterday, maybe, and broke her tibia? And, uh, and she actually attended a meeting afterwards before the pain set in. That's, she's pretty dedicated, I have to say. Uh, that's what the plan was, that she said, "I don't feel so bad yet, let's have this meeting before." And then she went in to get, get that or worked on. So, anyway, just wanted to let you know that, that Mona has a, a broken leg and, and, uh, but she's still, you know, standing up and saluting, which is, which is, um, above and beyond the call. Thanks.
Thanks for letting us know.
She's sitting down with her leg up too.
Okay. Anything else?
I'm good.
We have a full day tomorrow too, so. All right, we'll see everybody tomorrow at noon. Thank you.
No, 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 no. We'll see everybody tomorrow at a quarter to 10.
Oh, yes, we have our executive session. Thank you.
Executive session.
Let's see. At 9:45.
9:45.
And I'll be here at 8:00.
So damn confusing.
Yes, okay. We'll say that again. We will-
And the link will be sent to us.
Convene our executive session together at 9:45 publicly and then we will reconvene for the public at noon for our regular session. Um, so, thank you for that and thank you grassroots.
All right.
All right. Good night.
And Cherry.
Bright and early. Well, kind of bright.
Bye.
Bye.
I have my first meeting at 8:30 tomorrow.
Thank you, Cherry.